UbaSutter.live, local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Please rise and remove your hats.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next roll call, please. Natalie?
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor House.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. There is a request to pull item 593 2025, and we'll discuss that first under county departments. With that item pulled, is there any public comment on the remaining consent agenda? Okay, seeing none? Any board comment or questions?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
475 is 595,000. A little bit to put in the consent agenda, so I requested it be pulled by county department.
475, thank you. 475, okay. So we'll pull 475 as well? Okay, minus those two items, any additional board comment or question? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, with the exceptions of 612 and 374, for those of them know.
Great, thank you. Okay, consent agenda passes. Next, we're going to move on to special presentation. First up is present proclamation to Pat Thomas honoring his years of service. Good. I'll read this, and then we'll have the rest of the board come down, and we'll go over and take a picture. County of Yuba Board of Supervisors proclamation honoring facilities manager Pat Thomas. Whereas Patrick A. Thomas was born in San Francisco, California, and moved to Yuba County when he was just six months old, he graduated from Sutter High School in 1979 and has continued to make Yuba Sutter his home. And whereas Pat began his career with Yuba County in August of 1988 in the General Services Department as a maintenance supervisor. Over the next 37 years, he held various supervisory and management positions in the Administrative Services Department. Pat was promoted to Facilities Manager in 2009 and has served in this position for 16 years. And whereas Pat established a robust safety program and has also been instrumental in many facilities-related projects, including the remodeling of the courthouse, first and third floors, the acquisition of remodeling of the victim's, acquisition and remodeling of the victim's services office, and several projects on county facilities such as replacing roof setting, emergency generators, replacing flooring, as well as many others. Whereas Pat has helped numerous employees strengthen their self-confidence, develop their abilities, and refine their skills as county staff, enabling them to better serve Yuba County's constituents. His collaboration with county departments and outside agencies has made him one of the most respected members, not only of the Administrative Services Department, but the entire county organization. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Yuba County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Patrick Thomas for his 37 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Yuba County and expresses heartfelt appreciation and best wishes for a happy, healthy, and fulfilling retirement. Thank you so much for your service and congratulations on your retirement.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone I've worked with for 37 and a half years, and it's been a great place to work, and I know it will continue to be. I've made so many friends, and most of them have already retired for me. I just wanted to thank everybody from the bottom all the way up to the top. Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to present a proclamation to Tanima Morrow honoring her years of service.
Make her speak.
Morning, Tanima. County of Yuba Board of Supervisors proclamation honoring Chief Deputy County Counsel Tanima Morrow. Whereas Tanima earned her bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in sociology from the University of California in San Diego, and her Juris Doctor from the University of the Pacific McGeorge School of Law, and she practiced law in the Sacramento area prior to joining Yuba County Council's office, prior to joining the County Council's office in Yuba County. And whereas Tanima joined the Yuba County Council's office in 2022 as a deputy county council, where she quickly established herself as a hardworking, skilled, and competent attorney capable of handling complex legal matters in all areas of the office of the county council, with a constantly friendly, helpful approach, and strong commitment to providing the best possible legal advice to all county departments and the Board of Supervisors. And whereas Tanima was elevated to the chief deputy county council position in 2023, where she excelled in the training and development of county council attorneys and utilized her effective leadership style to contribute greatly to the management of the county council's office. And whereas on top of her invaluable legal services, Tanima served Yuba County in multiple volunteer roles such as trainer to court-appointed special advocates, board member to the county digital law library, and the representative on the Blue Ribbon Commission. And whereas Tanima has now received the well-deserved honor of appointment by the Governor of the State of California to Superior Court Judge for the County of Sutter, she makes this journey from Yuba County to the Superior Court with the greatest respect, admiration, and gratitude, and we will miss her ongoing person, her outgoing personality, her generous and cheerful nature, and of course, her infectious smile and laughter. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Yuba County Board of Supervisors recognizes and commends Chief Deputy County Counsel Tanima Morrow for her years of dedicated service to the citizens and leadership of Yuba County, and wishes her success as she pursues this new chapter in her legal career as a Sutter County Superior Court Judge. Congratulations.
I said I wasn't going to cry. Thank you so much. I've been here for three and a half years, and it's been great. Everybody here is so nice and kind, and oh, this is very bittersweet. I will miss Yuba County dearly, and thank you for the county council's office and Janet for everything. Thank you, guys.
Guys, thank you for crying. I don't even know the picture.
Yeah.
Hey, Rachel, Rachel, why don't you do one to the board, and I'd like to see my council office be coming along.
Next is item 600, receive a presentation from Pacific Gas and Electric regarding updates on related items and projects. All right, hopefully I can figure out the technology. Thank you for the help, appreciate it. Thank you to the members of the Board of Supervisors for letting me come and speak with you today. My name is Brandon Black, Government Affairs for Pacific Gas and Electric. Serve as your direct contact at the company, so should anything arise that I could help you with, let me know. Have had an opportunity to work with some of your staff, including your county administrator, and it's been a really fantastic opportunity. So relatively new still to the role and to the company, been around Sacramento and the region for a very long time, but really excited to have the opportunity to come and learn more about Yuba County. So we will go ahead and get straight into it. Just have a couple of things to go over with you all today. There we go. Just a couple of things to go over with you all today. I'll try to get out of your hair pretty quickly. If there's anything in here in this presentation that you'd like more clarity or information on, please let me know. Happy to provide that information for you or get you some additional materials after our meeting. So talk a little bit about identifying reducing wildfire risk, our wildfire system upgrades, vegetation management, our power line safety settings, public safety power shots, which I'm sure you've all heard of before, and then provide you some opportunities or some resources rather for support for customers. So layers of wildfire protection. Number one thing for us as a company is safety and keeping our hometown safe. As part of that commitment, we must assess the risk of wildfire and do everything that we can to reduce the risk associated with such events. More than 50% of our service territory is considered to be in high-risk fire areas. This accounts for roughly 532,000 customers and thousands of miles of infrastructure. So now that you know a little bit about our folks that are in higher fire-risk areas, what have we done over the last number of years, and what do we continue to do to make sure that we are protecting our hometown? So new tools and technology. We've installed over 2,000 weather stations and high-definition cameras. They're monitored by trained professionals to better predict and respond to wildfires and severe weather. Number of safety and infrastructure protection teams that are deployed and trained to respond to emergencies as they happen. Enhanced power line safety settings, which we'll get into in just a little bit, in addition to the public safety power shut offs. We continue to strengthen our electric system by upgrading power lines. It includes moving power lines underground and installing strengthened power poles and covered power lines around the territory. We do have a data sharing portal open for agencies. If your agency or your folks are interested in having access to this, let us know. Happy to get them an information so that they have access to our work plans for undergrounding and wildfire safety system upgrades. As relates to vegetation management, we continue to monitor vegetation that may come into conflict with critical infrastructure and cause an outage or wildfire. Each year PG&E inspects roughly 100,000 miles of power lines, performs additional inspections in areas of increased risk, trim, we trim or cut down trees that pose risk, and we address dead, dying, and otherwise hazardous trees. We do have some resources available for customers who are interested in our vegetation management system. If they have questions or if there's things happening in and around their properties, there are some resources for them to reach out to, to get some direct information from the company. Enhanced power line safety settings. You may have heard of this. EPSS is what we call it acronym. We love our acronyms. EPSS is a proven wildfire prevention tool that automatically turns off the power within one-tenth of a second or faster if a hazard like a tree branch hits a line enabled with EPSS. These settings are in place on all power lines considered to be in high-risk areas. Roughly 1.8 million PG&E customers are protected by EPSS-enabled lines. Preventing ignitions prevents wildfire, which with EPSS-enabled, we have seen 65% fewer ignitions since last year. Despite the risk of wildfire rising in California on average since 2023, we have seen reductions in customers impacted per outage while also seeing reductions in the length of outages because of the EPSS system. Wanted to share with you our customer outreach timeline throughout the process of an outage. We are consistently communicating with our customers with an initial notification once the outage occurs, and then finally, after the outage has been fixed, we do an analysis, and then a report is issued after that, which customers also have access to. Public safety power shut offs. These are our last resort mitigation tool to help prevent wildfires. On the screen, you'll see a few conditions that would lead us to initiate a PSPS, including things like high winds in excess of 19 miles per hour, red flag warnings declared by the National Weather Service, and other conditions that could cause for potential ignition of wildfires. Communication is paramount in these events as well. You'll see on the screen, we have a fairly robust notification system. Starts with our public safety partners. Want to make sure that our public safety partners are well aware. If there is a potential outage from our weather services, we're monitoring that constantly, and we like to make sure our public safety folks are notified quickly, as well as our customers, to make sure that we can mitigate for any potential challenges or issues. So next, I will provide a few customer resources and support tools. You may already be familiar with some of our savings and support programs that are available to customers, but wanted to make sure to highlight them here. For low-income customers, we have a few saving options to explore, including the California Alternative Rates Energy, the CARE program, our FARA program, which is specifically for electric utility customers, and then the LEAP program, which is another option for low-income home energy assistance for folks should they need it. We also have some programs for all customers, including budget billing, Go Green Home Energy financing, to upgrade some systems in your own home, and then our home energy checkup, which is an opportunity for us to come out and give you some tips and ideas on how you can better equip your home. All right, so next up, just a few more options for folks should you need some help, some disability disaster access and resources, 211 provider network, backup power, and then in-language support if for folks who may need it. Additionally, we provide baseline. We have a baseline medical program, and for folks who self-identify, our self-identified vulnerable program, additional resources are available for folks in those categories, including things like additional discounts, backup batteries, generators, things of that nature, should they require it or need it. Some additional customer resources, wildfire safety for anybody who's interested in learning more about our efforts on wildfire. The Reported app, which is a really excellent tool for anybody to use to help report things that are not critical emergency situations but could potentially lead to a safety challenge on our equipment. Take a picture of it, send it to us. We can get folks out pretty quickly. And then the Safety Action Center, which is a resource for people to create emergency safety plans for your own families and your own. That takes me through my presentation. Just thank you again for the opportunity to come before the board today. Been an absolute pleasure to learn more about this community. Really looking forward to 2026 and all the fun things that are going on out here in Yuba and Sutter County. Working collaboratively with your team has really been a lot of fun. Looking forward to what we'll be able to accomplish over the next coming years. With that, that is all I have for you, but if you have any questions, happy to answer it. And of course, any additional information that I could provide for you, let me know. Happy to get it. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, thank you for being here today and for your support. Thanks, guys. Next up is item 597 2025, receive presentation from Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health on Senate Bill 43.
Good morning.
Morning.
Board members, I'm Rick Bingham. I'm the Director for Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, and I'm here this morning to talk to you about Senate Bill 43, which is an expansion of LPS conservatorship regulations. So I will start by talking about what a LPS conservatorship is. So this is a legal arrangement whereby an individual or the conservator is authorized to make legal decisions for another individual or the conservatee as a result of grave disability due to a mental. And county mental health plans, which Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health is, are charged with placing and treating conserved individuals. Counties have certain responsibilities for conservates. Some of those lie with behavioral health and others with the Public Guardians Office. So I'll talk about both of those and start with behavioral health. So as you can see there, we are charged with screening, assessing, and providing an opinion on whether an individual meets LPS criteria. And then we also provide treatment recommendations if we do believe that they meet that criteria. We also refer to appropriate placements, and then as behavioral health, we pay for those placements. We also provide case management when the conservatee is in a locked placement. And so that might look like providing periodic evaluations to determine whether or not their current level of care is the appropriate level of care. We also have case management responsibilities when folks live in the community. So if they are in a residential facility, we help them get to appointments, teach independent living skills, et cetera, transport to placements, to courts, and to other community events. Responsibilities for your Public Guardians Office include, and I should say too, that 95% of the time, the Public Guardian is the conservator or LPS conservates. So the Public Guardians' responsibilities include investigation, and this is to assess whether an individual is likely to qualify for LPS services. They also ensure that the conservatee receives appropriate treatment, both mental health and physical health treatment. They manage the conservatees' finances, and they collaborate with us and other agencies to ensure comprehensive care. I mentioned earlier that behavioral health recommends placements, and these placements have to be at the least restrictive level of care. And so you can kind of think of this in kind of three levels of care. The first is the most severe, most acute, most intensive level of care. These are locked facilities such as acute psychiatric hospitals, or like we have at Behavioral Health, our psychiatric health facility, which is a 16-bed, 24/7 locked facility. And then you have your long-term care facilities. These can be either locked or unlocked, and individuals may stay at these facilities for a year, two, or three or longer at times. These are institutions for mental disease, mental health rehabilitation centers, et cetera. And then residential care, these are typically facilities in the community, like board and care facilities, or it could just be that an individual is living independently in their own home. This next slide just shows some data related to conservates. And as you can see, the top left-hand graph shows the trend that we've experienced in the last seven years. So as you can see there, it's essentially doubled for the last seven years with the number of LPS conservates that we've had in both counties. Below that shows our facility costs and cost per client. So it's close to $6.7 million a year that we pay to house these individuals, as state of behavioral health is responsible for the payment of their housing. That is a significant cost for us. It's about two-thirds of our realignment annually. And you can see there, it's an average cost per client of $6,000 to $6,000 a year with an average length of stay of two and a half years. And then on the right side, again, same data for the last seven years, but split out by county. So you can see that it's pretty evenly split year to year between the counties. You may wonder why the increase in LPS conservates over the last few years, and I think there's a number of reasons for that. One that I'll highlight is, we've especially seen this in the last year or two, is kind of a shift in costs from state to counties. We've seen this in an increase in referrals from the Department of State Hospitals, and Care Court can sometimes be a pathway as well for conservatorships, and that's a newer law that has been implemented. So that gets us to the changes to LPS conservatorship as a result of SB 43, which was signed into law on October 10, 2023. Implementation of SB 43 was to begin as early as January 1, 2024, but no later than January 1, 2026, and both your board and the Sutter County Board voted to delay implementation until January 1, 2026, as did the vast majority of counties in California. So SB 43 expanded the definition of gravely disabled under the LPS Act to include a standalone severe substance use disorder. So no longer have to have a mental illness per se. It can just be someone with a substance use disorder, and then also a co-occurring mental health or substance use disorder. And then it expands the criteria for grave disability by including personal safety or necessary medical care as eligible for conservatorship. So these are the new qualifying conditions here, and you can see there, serious risk to health or safety or inability to access essential medical care, et cetera. And some key examples are noted below that for your reference. And so what does this mean going forward? And we don't know for sure yet. Obviously, we haven't implemented, and most of California hasn't implemented this and won't until January 1. But early evidence from the counties that have implemented suggests that the impacts have been low so far. So for example, San Diego County implemented about a year ago, and they reported that only 1% of 5150 holes were associated with grave disability due to a severe substance use disorder, and no significant trends could be linked to the expanded LPS criteria. And this is consistent with the anecdotal evidence that we see from other counties that have implemented as well. However, of course, as more systems become aware of SB 43, it's possible that this could increase over the next few years. And finally, there are some complications with this. There are currently no facilities that will take an individual with a sole diagnosis of substance use disorder against his or her will. So substance use treatment has always been voluntary. It's always required an individual to state that they will go to treatment. And so this is a big shift in how treatment will be provided. And so there were licensing and regulatory changes that needed to occur, and so Governor Newsom on September 27, 2023-- And so Governor Newsom, on September 27, 2024, signed SB 1238, which does allow the admission of patients to LPS-designated facilities under SB 43 with a sole substance use diagnosis. The Department of Healthcare Services needs to provide us with regulations and guidance showing how we comply with that. And thus far, they've provided only interim regulations, so we don't have the final regulations yet. Once those are released, facilities will have 18 months to comply, and that will mean reapplying for LPS designation and getting approved for LPS designation. And so our psychiatric health facility at Behavioral Health is one of those LPS-designated sites, and we will have to also reapply. So in summary, we have seen an increase substantially in LPS conservatorships over the last seven years, and we anticipate that that could increase further with SB 43 going forward in the new, in the next few years. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments from board members?
Through the chair. Thank you, Rick, for bringing this and presenting on it to our county. It really does affect, affects a lot in our county. So the intention of the bill is to help get people that are unable to care for themselves due to their drug habits and alcohol habits off the street. So the people that are walking around, standing out in traffic, becoming a risk themselves and the public. So the intention was good, the cost is high. Just a question I have on the $6.6 million we currently spend, is a lot of that due to the fact that we don't have these care facilities here? Does that have any?
That's certainly part of it. A lot of it depends on the level of care. Obviously, the more intensive level of care, the more costly. And these are facilities that are not reimbursable by Medi-Cal in large measure, and so we receive no reimbursement. So essentially, we're paying 100% of the cost for the facilities.
Okay. I'd just like to challenge our staff at Yuba County to try to be proactive. I mean, I know it's, the timeline's kind of here now, but the, it sounds like we have some more time to figure out, as these regulations are getting released, we have more time to figure out how we're going to deal with this. But figuring out how to get, you know, 100 more beds in our county in these type of private sector facilities, maybe it's encouraging the development of those, continuing to support anybody that has that idea, just making it a priority in Yuba County. So I just challenge staff to continue that, I'm sure they are, but maybe make it a strategic priority even at some point. And then the other thing is that I don't want our law enforcement not to be able to use the protection that was created. So I mean, if the intention was to get people help, get them off the street, I mean, we should still use it even if it's going to be a rising cost. So I just, I'd like to support law enforcement in that as well. And then I still, it's hard to get over that $66,000 per client, so I think there's a lot of, a lot of development needs to happen if we want to bring that down. And then just imagine what we could do with, even if we reduce that by, you know, made it 1/3 of our budget. Imagine all the proactive intervention that could go on and change in our county if we were able to save that 3rd, so.
I will add, if you don't mind, that we've worked with a partner, Willow Glen, and there are some bond dollars that are associated with Proposition 1 that was recently passed, and they've applied with our support to build a facility in Yuba County. So we should be hearing in the spring as to whether or not we get those dollars to be able to build 16 beds, which is, you know, probably sounds like a drop in the bucket, but it's pretty significant.
Well, thank you again.
If you're knowledgeable about Willow Glen, the 16 beds, are they low, medium, or high level of?
It would be a long-term care, so kind of a medium.
Medium?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what does, I guess, go into it? Because I was looking at that on our agenda, and it's $10 million for 16 beds, which is like $600,000 per bed, and that seemed a little pricey. And I was curious, what is the criteria? Because I think it's $1,000 per square foot that they're using to build that facility. How, what's involved in a facility like that that makes the costs so exorbitant?
You know, I'm not a developer, so I'll say that. But, and it might behoove the board to have Willow Glen come and present on this item to give you more details. But generally speaking, mental health facilities are kind of health-level care, or sorry, health-level facilities, right? And so they have to ensure that there are, there's a lot of safety built into those facilities, and I'll leave it at that. My knowledge is pretty limited when it comes to facilities and building.
Anything else? Great. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next up is public communication. Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, requesters, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. So this is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on something not on the agenda?
Through the chair, we do have one request to speak card from Tony Farley.
The A. Vaskis. Tony Farley, Northview City, Public Avenue, Wilkley Drive. Thank you, County Administrator, Chief Saxon for his service. Thank you, County Council, Jan Bender, Majora Lee for his service. Thank you, Greg Barford, Sacramento for his service. Thank you, Supervisor Mesk, the horse for his service. Thank you, Greg Bar, thank you, Seth Fuller, the DEI Diversity Board Member, also, also accountant, anti-tax person, majority person for his service. Supervisor House for his service. A. Vaskis, the Marine Reserve Deputy for his service. Vaskis. Thank you, thank you, Mary for her service. Thank you, Rachel Media for her service. Thank you, the Afghan, now judge for her service. I was a new lawyer, new lawyer now. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Liu and Jennifer. Thank you, the Sheriff's Department, thank you, the Fire Department, and thank you, and thank you, and thank you, Ursula, UCP Sergeant, and thank, and thank you, Rachel Lieutenant over there, Ms. Jack. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, no additional comments? Great, we'll move on to county departments. So we have two items that were pulled from consent that we will discuss numerically or in agenda order. The first one would be 475. Is anyone here from probation that can talk about that? Okay. It's approved memorandum of understanding with Sutter County Health and Human Services and Yuba County Probation and Yuba County Sheriff to receive providing access and transforming health justice involved, round three funding in the amount of $596,000 and change to provide Medi-Cal pre-release services under the CalAim JI initiative, so.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. My name is Stephanie Bealy. I'm Program Manager at Probation Department. Yes, we can just ask, what questions did you guys have regarding this?
Large amount of money to be put on the consent calendar, so I just want a little better explanation about what that dollar amount's for.
So originally, the dollar amount, the reason it increased from previously was, it was two separate MOUs previously, and then at the recommendation of County Council and Sutter County Council, we combined it, and the money from the Department of Healthcare Services through PATHFunding is going to be coming through probation and the Sheriff's Department to provide services through CalAim and the substance abuse clientele of CalAim and the justices involved. That's why the increase was, and then it's coming through the departments to provide services.
All right. Through the chair.
I have a question.
Kind of presented itself because I'd been talking with a couple employees the last few days. So at Yuba County, for our benefits enrollment, we have, Yuba County HHS has taken over the county jail enrollments of the people that are within 90 days of their departure from the jail, so that they're on Medi-Cal for the last 90 days, however it works. Is our county being reimbursed for that through CalAim? Because it used to be through public health, I think, and now it's through HHS.
I think Dr. Liu could probably speak better to that, so I'll have her speak on that.
Thank you, Supervisor House. So I just want to clarify that this funding is path just involved round three behavioral health linkages, so not related to your question, but I'll be happy to answer related to your question. So the CalAim Justice Involvement Initiative is through an 1115 waiver where the federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services has allowed the state of California to allow their prisons, county jail, and juvenile detention center to not have to pause Medicaid/Medi-Cal when an incarcerated person comes into a correctional facility. And that processing, as of right now, there's actually no mechanism in terms of claiming. However, we can, through the correctional facilities, national provider identification number called the NPI, we can bill DHCS for clinical services up to that 90 days that you talked about. But I do want to specify that it's a complicated program, and the components presented at this memorandum of understanding between Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, Sutter HHS, and Yuba County Sheriff and Probation is for a separate component, which is behavioral health linkages. What does that even mean? Is that Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health staff, 1.3 FTE since 10/1/2024, have been embedded within the Yuba County Jail and the Detention Center. So if there's any severe or persistent mentally ill individual who needs to be connected to care with Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health can have that process initiated while they're still incarcerated. Hopefully, if they agree to ensure that they have a scheduled appointment and ensure that they will show up to those appointments and the medications to tide them over until they can show up to those appointments. The $596, $130 is in addition to the money to maintain for salary benefits of those 1.3 FTE, and that will allow the Yuba County Sheriff's Department, Yuba County Probation Department to enhance and expand substance use disorder services such as assessment for ASAM. So what do they need? And then expand medication-assisted treatment. Can they be started on Suboxone, Methadone, et cetera?
So I still have a question that was, just in our county, is our eligibility, I think that's what they're called, eligibility workers in HHS, is that being paid for? Is that, is that being repaid to the HHS for the time that they're serving over there doing qualification eligibility?
Yeah. And I'm not the Social Services Deputy Director for HHS, so I can invite Jen Vaskis as a Director or Jamie Bartolome to come up and clarify that question. Sorry, my expertise is within very.
Yeah, I just saw a shift from public health to HHS.
So public health actually doesn't determine that eligibility for the Medi-Cal benefits. That's on the public assistance side of our department, but we are compensated for processing applications, and we claim and are reimbursed for processing the applications. The change here is that previously, they couldn't bill to Medi-Cal when somebody was institutionalized, and so that's really the main difference is now 90 days prior to release, they can do the billing. So our eligibility technicians are determining the eligibility prior to them leaving the facility.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any additional board comment or questions?
To approve.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I'll do make a comment. I saw on social media that you received an award, Dr. Liu, so congratulations. I wasn't at CSAC, I was at Aqua Conference, but I saw it online, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Liu. Okay, so we have a first, is there a second? Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Next up, 593, 2025, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, approve resolution, amending resolution, sorry, adopt resolution, amending resolution number 216-2016-88, repealing and reinstating the rules and procedures for the government of the Board of Supervisors, presentation of preservation of order and transaction of business, so.
Good morning, Chair Bradford and board members. I'm a little sick, so I am a little groggy here. But changes that were made to our rules and procedures, we had to add an individual board member item, and that was due to the, this was done because of the discretionary fund, so we needed to add an agenda item listing. So whenever you do bring your discretionary funds forward, we have it already listed on our agenda. So that was the main purpose of the change. So while we did oversee it, we did see that some of our procedures were outdated. Some of them, some of the changes that we made were to our regular meeting schedules, our agenda item deadlines, some of our voting procedures. And then another change that we did do is we did add some verbiage to the board member agenda item request. This was done just to clarify procedures moving forward. Of course, this is not including any recognitions, as we do do those as needed, as your requests come forward to the Chair or to the CEO's office, definitely. We go ahead and look at them, and if they need to be on the following agenda item, we go ahead and we list them. So we also included digital and electronic signatures also to the changes, and that was due to our admin services is now using OpenGov, where they do require the e-signatures. So that was also giving us permission to be able to do that. I don't know if you have any further questions?
Yeah, through the chair. So I asked for this item to be pulled just for one reason. There was some verbiage added. It says, "All agenda items requested to be added to any agenda by any board member must be presented to the full board to receive consensus or a majority vote, directing staff to bring the, bring back the agenda item at a future meeting." And that verbiage there specifically, basically, it creates a long gap if there's something urgent that needs to be handled by a Board of Supervisors member, or if any one of us wants to represent our constituents and bring an item forward, it makes it to where I would have to say it openly at the board comments, get a consensus of the board, and then it could come, it would go to the county for approval, and then a lot, I mean, it adds delay, like a week of delay or more, because you have to have the item submitted 13 days before the next meeting. So it basically creates it where you have to skip a full meeting just to get anything across if you're a Board of Supervisors member, whereas a department head just has that 13-day window. So I would just like to preserve the right to be able, for any of us supervisors, to bring something forward with the same timeline as the, as the department heads. So I'd like to change the verbiage to mirror other counties that say that any member of the board is allowed to bring forward their item and follow the same timelines as the department heads.
If I could, through the chair, just to make sure we're clear on this, because the intent behind this had to do with the use of staff resources to develop an item to be presented to the board, to make sure there was consensus from the full board in order to utilize those staff resources, so that we didn't have individual board members directing the work of staff. But if this, if the recommended language is about the board members individually developing an item that would be presented to the full board for consideration, I guess that's a separate issue. That would be unique, it's not something we've done in the past where we've had individual board members develop their own board item. But if it has to do with staff resources, I'd still recommend that the board stay with a course of action where you, we make sure that there's, the majority of the board's intent is, is, let's see, that we make sure that we have at least the board's overall policy direction is fulfilled when we have staff developing an item that's presented back to the full board. So either through consensus, you know, at a previous board meeting, or that it's consistent with maybe previously board actions, but something to make sure that we don't have staff resources being utilized for individual board members to have something brought forward that hasn't been previously embedded by the full board.
And through the chair, just, just in response to that, I'm not asking for the full allocation of staff time or anything to build agenda items. I'm saying if I need to bring something in front of the board, that would be the time where the board would give consensus if we want to put any staff time into it. We just shouldn't be silenced until the board says ahead of time that we can speak on it. In Robert's Rules of Order, you could bring an item of business forward, and if it has a first and a second, then you can call discussion, right? But our county does things a little different. But our county does things a little different. If we bring an item to the agenda, it could be a discussion only item. And then with the consensus of the board, it takes board action or allows for staff time to be invested. So I'm not asking for anything for a single director to be able to direct staff. I'm just asking for the ability to discuss items that.
So so if I understand correctly, how this might work is an individual supervisor would probably work through the Chair at the time to put something on the agenda for discussion, but it wouldn't necessarily have something the, you know, it wouldn't have a resolution. It wouldn't have whatever the official thing is that the board as a whole would have to approve because that typically would develop staff time to develop, legal has to review that and approve it. And so what you're asking for is the ability to have that discussion, to get that consensus, to to have an item that then in the future, the actual item that that, you know, is the resolution, is the ordinance, is the whatever, then the board would would take formal action at that time.
It could be, I mean, it could be formal action the same day if the board so will, right? Like if it was something that didn't require a resolution or didn't require staff time or something that was well presented, if Seth brought us a Treasury document that was like outstanding and presented it never, there was no question, just saying that's an if, but it could, I mean, the board could approve it.
Like potentially a letter of support for something is an example where.
So I just, I just don't think we should have a two week to three week to plus the staff time and review before something we want to say gets added to the agenda. It's and I've experienced it, so I just want to make sure it's not a hurdle for any of the future board members. So.
I would go even further and say that the individual board members should be able to put things on the agenda submitted and that it shouldn't have to wait for the process. So I would say excise that section. I really like the part where we're doing electronic signatures, I think that's excellent. But locking down board members so that they can't bring forward subjects that are important to their constituents. And everything has to go through the bureaucracy and get reviewed and edited. We had an issue a few years ago where I think the sheriff and the DA wanted to bring forward a sanctuary county issue on firearms. I don't recall what the exact subject was. And that got edited and delayed by CAO and legal for weeks and then demoted in its significance, let's say, by its wording. And it would be better if the people want something, we are the representative of the people. We should be able to put what the people want forward. If it gets voted down, it gets voted down. But the power should lie within the representatives of the people, not in the bureaucracy that is unelected.
So I agree with that in spirit, but I do have concerns related to the legality of something that a supervisor could bring forward and this board could vote on and then legal counsel could later determine that it we basically voted to violate the law.
Legal counsel would consult at the time of the vote and say, hey, I don't like the wording. I would prefer it to be this way. And then we would choose to modify or not modify as legal counsel advises.
I'm going to ask legal counsel to weigh in on their ability to do that on the spot.
It's always better to receive things in advance and have time to do the research and review rather than just trying to handle a question on the spot at the meeting. My recommendation would be that some advanced time be given to county council to review whatever it is.
Through the Chair, if I may, also just let the board members know that normally letters of support, recognitions, those are done as needed. Any staff items, all department heads, all department agenda items, they also go through review. They have to wait the thirteen days, they have to be reviewed by county administrators, office, and legal counsel. So all of our agenda items go through them first before they're on an agenda. So it's nothing new, it's not something that we're trying to eliminate any concerns from constituents from your districts. It's just there's certain things that can be placed on an agenda and there's certain things that cannot be placed. And definitely, everything goes through county council to make sure legalities are there. And that's what we have to abide by.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, since there seems to be some confusion of what it says and everything else, can we, is this an emergency? Can we pull this item for another agenda and review it further so each board member?
If I could, through the Chair, yeah, that's what I was going to recommend. Either you could discuss this further, you could form an ad hoc. A simple approach would be to take the resolution, or yeah, the resolution as is and delete that added section. And so basically, everything stays status quo, which would be under section five, that paragraph C, that was the added section.
And we could do that and also establish an ad hoc, right, too?
Right, so that way this item could move forward today. And then if the board wanted to amend this in the future and add back in an additional section, you could.
Yeah, through the Chair, I would just actually remind you that our next board meeting is until January thirteenth. And also on here, we are listing your discretionary fund item. So if we move it or pull it to the January thirteenth meeting, we do not approve it now. That just puts it further where you're able to bring forward discretionary fund requests.
I guess I'd make a motion that we approve it with pulling out that section.
I would second the approval with the section C, what is it, five C removed?
Okay, any public comment on that? Any additional board comment on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, I'd also like consensus to maybe establish an ad hoc committee with Supervisor House and Supervisor Messick if he's willing to look at if there is a better way to phrase that that can meet what's the intent that's desired while also providing the flexibility and making sure that to just take a look at that.
I would be willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You guys good with that?
Good. Do we need a vote on that? I always forget.
Consensus is fine, you can also vote on it if you want to.
I think we've got consensus, so. Yes, do we have, well, I guess I'll ask, do we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say again that there needs to be the ability of supervisors to move subjects forward and not be.
All right.
Great, let's move on to the rest of county departments.
Thank you, Mary.
Starting with item five thirty five, twenty twenty five, Board of Supervisors appoint two representatives to Agency on Aging Area Four Advisory Council as representatives to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, respectively. So we've received three applications and it, did I, did I remember correctly, is, did one get pulled? Okay.
The Chair, we actually have, again, this is Mary Piscias, Clerk of the Board. But just want to let you know this was an item that was continued from our October fourteenth meeting. We do have, we did have a total of three applications. One application from Vivian McCullough was withdrawn. And then the application we received from Ms. Peggy Dehan, she was in the Marysville area. She is also on our Commission, Yuba County Commission on Aging. So she was appointed to the Area Agency on Aging Area Four by the Yuba County Commission on Aging. So it would not serve the board right to have her appointed twice to the same agency. So that only leaves one applicant, which would be Eurico Jacobs is the only one that's awaiting approval.
Okay.
Peggy Dehan is here. Is she clear on what we're doing?
Yes, she is. I attended also their Yuba County Commission on Aging meeting. And she was aware that she was appointed through her Yuba County Commission on Aging meeting, correct? Now, just to clarify, Yuba County Commission on Aging also has two appointees to the Agency on Aging Area Four. Yuba County Board of Supervisors also has two appointees. So because she has been appointed to the Area Four Agency on Aging by Yuba County Commission on Aging, she can't go ahead and serve twice. So she is serving on Agency on Aging Area Four by Commission on Aging, she's representing them.
Okay, well, that's, thank you, through the Chair. I actually asked Peggy to come today because I thought she was being reviewed. So it sounds like you've already been approved on the commission. Okay. Okay, so so just to clarify, Peggy is currently appointed to the Area Four Commission on Aging, or Area Four on Aging.
Yes.
By the local Commission on Aging.
Correct.
And that term is as long as this term as well, it's not?
Oh, no, Commission on Aging, I'm not exactly sure what their term is. I believe it's until they desire. I don't believe that they have an ending term date.
Okay.
Because that is an appointment by the Yuba County Commission on Aging, has nothing to do with the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so she would have to, if we appointed her here, she'd have a two year appointment?
No, what would happen is that she'd be appointed twice to the same to the same agency.
I understand that, I'm saying if she wasn't a Commission on Aging appointment, if she was just a member of the public, how long would the term be?
I believe it actually would end on the twenty ninth.
Yes, it serves with the district appointment, so as district two, it would serve until you are completed with your term. Through.
January eighth.
Oh, no, this is January thirtieth, twenty twenty eight is what this says. I apologize.
So I just, I just say that, that being the Commission on Aging appointment is really great until they decide they don't want you to be on that anymore and they vote you out. Whereas if you're, if you're a supervisory appointment, you would be here until twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, well, I do know she has been appointed by the Commission on Aging, so it really would be up to her to go ahead and speak to the Commission on Aging and withdraw if she doesn't want to be appointed by them, and then we could bring this forward.
Do we know why Vivian withdrew?
We do not know. We just withdrew her application.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One is, so obviously, we're going to need somebody else or she's going to need to go on with the county and drop from the Agency Four, and then they're going to need somebody else. But my second comment is this, since once we appoint somebody, they're there for the term we appoint them to and there's no recourse, there's no possible way to to end that appointment. Even we can be recalled if the public doesn't like us. Shouldn't we make these appointments on every board every year and just renew it every year? That way, if we get a bad apple, we're not stuck with them for two, three, or four years.
I will tell you, all district appointments are done by the Board of Supervisors by yourself. So if you at any time feel that your representative that you have representing your district, you feel does not serve what your points are or what your views, it's up to you to go ahead and take them away. You could go ahead and remove them from their position.
Okay, so I specifically asked that, not on the Agency on Aging, I'm talking about a whole different board in my district that I appointed somebody and I asked if I could unappoint that person and I was told, no, I cannot.
Yes, you can, I don't know who's the one that told you you could not, yes. District appointments are district appointments, they're appointed by.
Cemetery district.
Not elected, not elected, we appointed that person, I asked if we could unappoint them.
So just to clarify, because sometimes the, I mean, the board always as a whole does those appointments, but sometimes they're specific to a district and sometimes they're from anywhere in the county. I don't know if that makes a difference as far as the ability of the board to pull them back versus the individual supervisor.
Yeah, I heard the mention of a cemetery districts, those are appointed by the board in full, so those are not supervisor appointed. So if a supervisor wants to remove a member from a cemetery district, you can't do that.
It was not a cemetery district, but what is the county, it was a county district.
It was, it was a county district, yes. We've had it in the past where supervisor did not feel that their representative was expressing their views or their point of view, so then he wanted to go ahead and remove and that member was removed.
But so would I have to bring that back to the whole board because it was a countywide thing and the board approved? Because I was told.
It's a district appointment, if it's a district appointment.
No, not a district appointment, it's a county appointment that came to the board.
I think.
If I could, maybe Janet will want to jump in, but yeah, I think there's, there's quite a few nuances that Mary is trying to explain. So you have appointments that are someone representing your district for a particular committee or commission versus appointments that are for, say, a special district that aren't your particular supervisory district specific. And then there's also state law nuances on top of this on, sometimes the board's limited on the length of the term and whether or not, once you've appointed, you can rescind that appointment.
Well, I guess I can use this as an example, Kevin, because this appointment for Agency Four on Aging isn't district specific. So we're going to appoint this person till twenty twenty eight. And if one of us doesn't feel like they're doing a good job or even the majority of us, there's no way to get them off there till twenty twenty eight. Is that correct?
Well, that, I'm going to let counsel speak on that, but whether or not there's a state law that would prohibit the board from being able to rescind that appointment. I know, I know.
That in the past on other particular district issues, I'm not sure if Area Four and Agency, Agency on Aging Area Four would qualify, you know, have some prohibition.
I'll be happy to look that up for you, I don't have those documents right at my fingertips on Area Four Aging. So I would need to check the state law, any bylaws, any governing documents for that. I'd be happy to get those from the Clerk of the Board's office and.
Obviously, I'm not worried about this person, but could you do it on every board, every appointment that we do? Because it's just like I'm saying, if if we appoint somebody for more than one year, there's no, and then they're not doing a job, there's no way for us to come back and say, we want them off.
If I could, through the Chair, I think that's a great recommendation that maybe future staff reports for board appointments, we can add a section in there to make sure it's clear to the board whether or not this appointment could be rescended or not, length of term, et cetera, so that that way you know what you're getting into with those appointments.
Yeah.
And through the Chair, just to go back to Peggy Dehan's confirmation here. I'd like, I'd invite you up, Peggy, if you want to come speak, but I just had a question for you.
I would like to clarify something as well.
Yeah.
When I was asked to this appointment from the Aging Commission, it was led to my, I was led to believe that they were approving this appointment. If it's a decision between that appointment and this appointment, tomorrow we have our meeting and I will clarify with them that I would rather have this appointment.
Okay, that's the question.
This is, this is what I was driving for. And I was led that it was one and the same. So when you guys brought this up, I was like, I'm confused, I thought it was the same appointment.
So so Peggy, just through the Chair, just so I have a hundred percent confidence in what I'm putting out here. So you'd rather serve at the will of the board, so you're in, you're locked in for two years until twenty twenty eight. And then you could still serve on your Commission on Aging, just not as their representative on the. Yeah, and then you'll have the ability at the Commission on Aging to to have appointments as well. Not you, but you can find an appointment, somebody to appoint from the Commission on Aging. So I think it'd be well served for her to serve our board.
I agree with you, but will you please?
So could she just publicly state that she resigns from her other appointment as of this moment? And then she is now a free agent and then we can then appoint her?
We are not the Commission on Aging, so we could not take that resignation.
I think it would be unfair to the Commission if I did that before notifying them of my intent. So I will leave it into your guys' hands on how you want to do the appointment. But I just wanted to make sure you knew my views and what my expectations were.
So I'll move that she be appointed contingent upon her resignation being accepted by the other commission?
Or as the commission representative, yeah.
And then exhort also to accept Eurico as the other appointee?
No, second that.
Okay, or first and a second, any public comment on, any additional public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Peggy.
Next up is Board of Supervisors appoint twenty twenty six representative and alternate to serve on Rural County Representatives of California, RCRC, Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, and Golden State Connect Authority, GSCA. So I can go ahead and present on this one. So the current representatives on RCRC and, or current representatives are myself as the primary and Supervisor House as the alternate on all three of these boards. It's typical that the same individual get appointed to all three because their board member, their board meetings are adjacent to each other. This is my third year serving as the RCRC rep. And I'm hopeful to get some additional leadership appointments tomorrow at their meeting. And so I would respectfully request the ability to continue serving in that role next year. And then I'm not sure who, if Supervisor House would like to continue to be the alternate or what the board's pleasure is.
Supervisor House, do you?
Yeah.
Would you like to stay as the alternate?
I'd like to continue as the alternate, I'm still, still trying to give our rural counties as much representation.
I'm still, uh, still trying to give our rural counties as much representation as we can, anywhere we can, especially in Yuba County. You know, it's, it's been quiet out there other than Gary for a lot of years.
I'll nominate Supervisor Bradford as the representative and Supervisor House as the alternate. Second.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item six thirteen, twenty-twenty-five. Clerk, Recorder, register our voters. Accept certification of the statement of vote for the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five statewide special election. Morning, Donna.
Good morning. Donna Heligas, County Clerk, registrar of voters. And, um, before I present the certification for your acceptance, I wanted to provide a, a little bit of background and information regarding the election. So at a glance, we had forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty registered voters. For this election, we had thirty-two precincts. We had twenty-two polling locations, which involved a few changes and a few new sites. We had three drop boxes, which did not change. We had one hundred and forty-eight poll workers and forty-eight canvas workers. It was a squeaker. We projected the cost at this election to the state. Um, I should say that the state, when they asked for cost projections, we did not know any of the rules of how the election would be conducted at that time. And once they initiated the legislation to call the election, we were not allowed to adjust our projections. So our estimate was three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Currently, I do have a few estimates that remain outstanding and I'm hoping that they are a little bit high. Uh, our current cost is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And you can see the breakout across, this is, um, a, some big categories. So printing was approximately a hundred and twenty-four thousand, staffing a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and precinct costs and supply charges seventy-two thousand. What turnout for this election of our forty-six thousand voters? Twenty-three thousand, three hundred and one voters participated, which was fifty-point-four-six percent. Of that total turnout, eleven percent was at a polling site voting on Election Day. Eighty-eight percent was vote by mail. And I want to qualify, we call those vote by mail, but those are ballots they received in the mail and they were returned by various reasons. Just to give you an idea, this is a comparison against some previous elections and turnout. So you can see we were at fifty percent for twenty-twenty-five. For the twenty-twenty-one governor recall, we were at fifty-six percent. At twenty-thirteen, which was a special vacancy, we were at twenty percent. In two thousand and nine, we had, uh, a ballot of state measures at thirty-one percent. And in two thousand and five, we had another slate of measures at fifty-one percent. Um, I found this was interesting. This was the turnout within each age range. So you can see from our, the demographic of eighteen years old to twenty-four years old, thirty-three percent of those voters turned out. In the seventy-five plus, seventy-three percent of those voters turned out.
Got out the old folks.
This is just an interesting graphic and, uh, for you to see a comparison at the top, this is a graphic provided by our PollPads, which check in voters on Election Day. And so you can see the flow of voters. And the top is the special election and at the bottom is a comparison to the November twenty-twenty-four election. We continue to receive ballots across those different methods and mail represented forty-four percent of the ballots we received back. Our Government Center Dropbox continues to be, uh, very widely used at twenty-six percent. We had seventeen percent turned in at poll sites, at four percent at our Lindafire Dropbox, four percent at our Government Center Lobby Dropbox, which was across from the security guards, at two percent at our counter, and point oh-three percent by fax. The only voters eligible to return their ballot by fax are, are military and overseas voters. So the, um, election has not been officially certified at this time, but the results have all been submitted. And so the next steps for Yuba County, uh, the first step is that there is currently a legal challenge. And that will be heard by the Central District Court of California on December fifteenth. I believe I heard there was another challenge that would be within that same timeframe. So we must continue to move forward, uh, while all the time looking and keeping in mind that there could be judicial challenges that come. What we'll be doing next in the county is we'll be working closely with the GIS team. The elimination, uh, the county going from two congressional districts to one congressional district will allow us to make changes to some of our voting precinct boundaries. For example, Saddleback, that area is a mail ballot precinct that does not have a poll site and that is directly an impact of the previous congressional boundaries. So we will be evaluating and looking to see if we can eliminate some of our mail ballot precincts and consolidate those across those lines that are now available. Um, and we have to do this and candidate filing for the June election begins a week from Friday, December nineteenth. Something that will also impact, this is a little peek ahead into the future, some of the laws that were recently passed, um, they're going to have a significant impact on how we conduct elections. So AB five, which was passed, is going to require that we basically count all ballots except provisionals and ballots that need to be duplicated by thirteen days after Election Day. That depending, of course, on turnout, depending on whether we have a one-card ballot or a two-card ballot, that's going to have a significant impact on the staffing required to perform those tasks. AB eight twenty-seven is related to signature verification and that's going to impact and reduce the time we have to notify voters that they need to cure their signature. They won't have less time, we will just have less time to notify them. It also will allow us to accept those signature cures via our drop boxes. SB three is going to require that we update the week of the election, the results, and then twice weekly thereafter until the only ballots remaining are the ballots that require a signature cure. That the, we're just waiting on the voter to try and fix their signature issue. This is going to have a significant impact, um, for us. We have a limited space and every time that we tally and bring that out, it, it requires us to move our entire voting system. And that's a minimum of an hour of work just before we can count the first ballot. And when you're talking about twice a week in a timeframe when they're asking us to be completely counted within thirteen days, it's a, it's a big ask. I guess it's not an ask, it's a big tell. Um, the legislation that is going to probably have the biggest impact to us is AB twelve forty-nine. Historically, Yuba County has had a process, the Saturday before the election, we call that absentee Saturday. And what we do, all the ballots received up to that point have been checked in. We validated the signature, we sorted them by precinct, and they're sitting in their envelopes sealed and secure in their envelope. That Saturday morning, we move into the board chambers. We bring in a lot of extra help and those envelopes are opened. That's the first time those envelopes are opened and the ballot accessed. That happens in this corner over here. Those ballots then move to inspection teams, which remove the ballots from the envelope. They check, make sure they aren't torn, they don't have jam or jelly, that they weren't marked with a red pen, things like that, that would enable that ballot to not be counted on the machine. And then after they go to the inspection team, they go straight to the tally scanner. So the ballot is opened, inspected, tallied, and resealed, all within this single room. AB twelve forty-nine is going to require that we eliminate that process. The state is requiring us on the Saturday before the election for a minimum of six hours to be open for full voting functionality, which is, um, it would be similar to having a, a single vote center on that day. But we don't have the staffing or the ability to support both those functions at the same time. So we will be looking at a complete revision of how we process absentee ballots and those are going to have to happen at earlier days. And so that's going to require additional staff earlier. So as I mentioned, the impacts will be space and staffing. And we, we are, in the elections office, a little disappointed to lose a process that we felt provided such great transparency of the process to the voters in one day, in one location. As summary, we, at first glance, without having done a full evaluation of what it's going to look like for that different process, we believe it's going to be an additional four extra help positions at sixteen hours a week for six weeks. It's going to require additional technical support. It's going to require increased space commitments at times that we may not have needed previously. We already take over the county practically for a period of time. And some of that is going to create increased wear and tear on our voting systems and the continual relocation of processing them. With that, I ask that you accept the statement of vote for the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five statewide special election. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or comments from board members? Through the chair. Donna, I just want to continually compliment you and your department. You guys do a lot of work and, and have to deal with the, the state policy all the time, but it's, it's pretty crazy and we appreciate you guys for doing it instead of us all the time. At AB twelve forty-nine, does it create more, or does it take some, some of our confidence away? And like, I mean, not just our county, because I know our county will perform ethically, but other counties, does it make it lo- a longer process, spread out with fewer resources to where it can't, where it's not as, uh, uh, confident of, or tampering and things like that?
Uh, counties, they all perform these functions in different ways. This bill was, um, received some strong objection at our conference from the smaller counties. It, we really feel that this is a step towards the state mandating vote centers. Yuba County is not a vote center county. Our voters don't seem to be interested in that process. They like Election Day going to their precinct. And so we did express, I sent a letter to the state expressing that we would like them to adjust this legislation because it was sponsored by the Secretary of State, that we understand they want an additional six hours for voters to have outside of normal business hours. We asked that they allow us to determine those six hours so that we could incorporate it into a process that worked for us and our voters. And the response we got back was, thank you, we'll let you know if we have any questions.
Thank you again. Thank you, Donna, to you and your team and all your volunteers for all the hard work you guys put in. So, any additional...
Thank you on behalf of my team.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Any additional board comment or question? I would move to accept the statement of vote for the November, November fourth statewide special election.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. So before we go on to the next item, I, is there a need for a restroom break? Okay, so let's recess until ten-thirty.
Okay.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth. This week on Yubasutter.live, lots of live streams, beginning with Tuesday Government Watch, presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. At noon, we'll be over in Yuba City at the Merriment Village Groundbreaking. At 3:00 PM, the Sutter County Supervisor's Regular Meeting. At 6:00 PM, the Yuba City Unified School District Trustees' Special Meeting. And at 6:30, the Marysville Unified School Trustees' Regular Meeting. On Saturday, December 13th, we'll be at the 9:00 AM Reefs Across America, live from Sutter Cemetery. At 2:00 PM, we'll check in with the Yuba City Christmas Stroll to find out what's happening. And at 5 o'clock, we'll bring you the Olafhurst Christmas Parade, live from Olafhurst Avenue, presented by Duke's Diner on 7th Avenue in Olafhurst, and by Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Sunday, December 14th at 6:00 PM, Reefs Across America Replay, and at 7:00 PM, the Olafhurst Christmas Parade Replay. Tuesday, Government Watch, and then Christmas in Yuba Sutter. That's happening this week, right here on Yubasutter.live. In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good, the prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here and it's, my dad and mom, um, have known Mary Jane and, and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on 7th Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on 7th Avenue, Olafhurst.
Today is a new policy that actually came out of your annual board workshop. You may recall in August, we went down a lot of the list that the county currently has as far as sponsorship goes with different events in the county. And then also back in September, we had some, another agenda item that looked at some sponsorship issues as well, um, the Farm to Fork Dinner and also the National Pumpkin Wayoff. So as we looked at what happened at workshop and also with that agenda item, we felt a sponsorship policy would be a needed policy that gives the board some criteria on what we would sponsor and how we would sponsor it. So, uh, we did put together this policy, working with various departments of the county. It establishes some definitions, uh, for the policy, also eligibility as well, what criteria you have to satisfy. Um, we did work on this as an ad hoc committee with Supervisor House and Supervisor Vasquez. We thank you for your input on that. Um, and it kind of goes through how we would incorporate that into the budget process because we are talking about financial contributions from the county. So we're incorporating that with a budget process to either be included in the budget as part of your annual budget review process, or how a one-off item can be brought to the board outside of the budget process if necessary, if something new, uh, comes up, uh, outside of the budget process. Um, we, I do want to point out that the overall approval for sponsorship does lie with the Board of Supervisors, the policy definitely outlines that. And we also request that we get recognized for our sponsorship contributions through our branding process. Um, we also clarified that with our sponsorships that we get no return benefit. There are some definite perks that the county would receive sometimes with sponsorship. Um, we're going to, uh, very politely decline those as our sponsorship is to sponsor the event, but sometimes tickets, parking, or things like that comes with that. But, um, we looked at that to be consistent with your water agency as well, and also on the advisory council, sometimes that can get a little murky. So we're going to not accept those with our sponsorship. And, uh, like I said, we will include that with the budget process every year, but we do have a process to incorporate a special if something new comes up. And with that, I'd be open to any questions from your board.
Questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, just a couple, Sean. Um, we didn't really talk about the, um, aligning it with the water agency and the ad hoc committee. We did that after, it was on last meeting's agenda, got pulled, so, uh, looks like that's what happened. Um, I just want to make sure there's some clarification. So we still want our board members to be involved in, in all of these, uh, events. We still want to be able, you know, at the water agency, we used to attend a lot of community events and it showed that we were bought in and it gave a place for our constituents to reach us out at the water agency, to, outside of the water agency meetings, gave us a place for our constituents to reach us at these events too with the county. So if we're not, um, it's going to be very expensive for all of us to continue to go to all of these. So people are going to see less of us, more than likely. And I just want to say, um, if we're speaking at the event, we still have the okay to accept tickets, right? And, um, if we're like a special guest of the event, like if the, if the city of Marysville has their 250th anniversary fireworks show that we're going to participate in, um, I'm sure our supervisors are going to want to be there to celebrate their country and, and, uh, network with their constituents. I just want to make sure we preserve the opportunity to do, to do that. Um, sometimes if there's a lottery system for tickets, um, and we're just in line with everybody else, we won't have the ability to get to some of those things. Um, yeah, I just, I just want to preserve, have, I don't know how we do that, how we can preserve that and not accept gifts.
I, I, I share that concern. I, I know that personally I've been to many fewer events since the water agency has changed its policy. Um, and so I don't, I don't know what the solution to that is because I understand the concerns. I don't know if there's certain circumstances where maybe those can be reimbursable, um, or something like that. Um, but anyway.
If I could, through the chair, maybe to, and Sean, please chime in. Uh, so this is focused on that, the gift, right? So this would be, um, no service in return. But for example, Supervisor House's, uh, example there, you, you're providing a service. If you're going to go there and you're speaking, or there's, there's something you're doing where you're, you're a part of the event, that's, that's a different scenario. Or it, it seems understandable that, that there would be, uh, the event would, would provide the tickets or whatever that you need to, to, to attend the event. But if it's, when I, when I see gift, that, that would mean there's, there's no service attached to it. You're just appearing there. And so that, from a policy standpoint, I guess the board needs to decide, um, because the, the, the sponsorship, these are, it's essentially taxpayer, um, sponsorship, right? So we have, we're using our tax dollars, Yuba County, to, um, for, for whatever reason, we're finding, the board's finding an interest, uh, public interest there to, to invest in that event, for whatever reason. And then it, it, from a board policy standpoint, does it make sense for the, the taxpayers to also kind of pay for the board members to attend that event or not? So that's, that's really a question back to the board. And we can obviously amend the policy as needed, you know, to reflect whatever policy direction the board wants to have.
And, and I just, I just pointed out with like the pumpkin way off, um, there was no benefit to me going to the pumpkin way off. Like I didn't go have a awesome dinner or anything else. I went to a meet and greet with, with growers to encourage the event to grow. And, um, a lot of those people post on social media that they met with the county supervisor from this district and that district. And I, I, I think a lot of the times it's, for us, it's not like a big benefit to go to a dinner. Uh, it's kind of tiring by the end of the night. You want to go to, you want to go to bed early because of all the talk and questions. And, um, I just think it's a big benefit to the county to have us out there. So I just, I figure we should talk about how we could add that in there. Um, if they were going to give the, the tickets to the, maybe we just need to come up with a formal invite process or something for our county supervisors to be invited to these events or something we could add to the grant application or the, um, sponsorship application saying like, if you want to invite a county supervisor to attend, or if you want to invite the board to attend, this is how we do that. So maybe we should bring that.
If I can to the chair, um, Supervisor House, so definitely your comments are heard. I think there's a distinct difference on when we get just allotted tickets, period, or the event wants to invite a specific person, being supervisor or not. Uh, we can definitely work on some clarification with that with council. I believe there is some differential with that. I think we can do some more research on that. And as Mr. Mallon said, if we needed to add something to this later, um, the way we have drafted right now, we could always add a, a section or two to clarify anything in the future as well.
I, I, I would be in support of either having staff look at that and bring it back or having maybe, uh, we have an ad hoc committee, right? Do we have an ad hoc on this? I can't remember.
We do have that.
That the ad hoc not be disbanded yet and could work with staff on some potential amendments in the future, um, in the, you know, next few months to, to kind of help clarify that and, and still allow that opportunity in, you know, in cases where it makes sense.
Yeah, my comment was pretty much the same. I think the intent is if we sponsor an event and that sponsorship comes with a table and eight dinner tickets, we're not going to take those. But if that event turns around and says, hey Supervisor House, we'd like you to be our guest and speak or whatever, that's a whole different animal. You're not sitting at a specific Yuba County table and, and something that the county paid for.
Right.
Be the same as another company buying something and then inviting you.
So are we tabling this or are we voting on it?
I, well, I, I, um, I don't know, I'm okay with approving it and then bringing up revision. But I.
Well, now, so the ad hoc committee, what you guys think?
I think we should, I think we should bring it back, but I mean, if there's, it is time of the essence on approving this, or can we approve it at another, another meeting?
Through the chair Supervisor House, I don't, we're not sitting on any, uh, pending sponsorships that are actually dependent on this right now. This was just, uh, when we reported out of the ad hoc, this was just the next available meeting.
I'm over the table and.
Or can, can you do the January meeting? Does that give time to do that? Okay, does that work for staff?
Absolutely. We'll, uh, do some further research on that. We'll confer with council on, uh, the specific invites and, uh, see if there's any amendments we have to, uh, due to the policy as written. So we'll be happy to bring this back.
I think we should try to encourage them to invite the supervisors too, because sometimes like they might invite me and I might not be able to make it, or, um, if there's two or three around, I mean, most of these events aren't just for, in one district. Thank you.
We'll see if we can, uh, add some, uh, some flexibility and some encouragement for the, uh, board members to attend, uh, written in the policy. I, I, I have some ideas I think we might be able to bring back on that based on the research we did to bring up the policy today, so we can definitely bring that back.
Thank you. Just to clarify, do we need a, a motion and a vote on, on continuing it to the next meeting? Or just directions?
Sure, you can do a vote, or you can also do a consensus, but you can just vote to continue it.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus, right?
Yeah, I, I said one more statement. Um, there's a line in there which on its surface is a good line, but I've seen it enforced and executed poorly, and that's, uh, that the events can't be, uh, political in nature or, uh, religious proselytizing. And again, on the surface, that makes sense, but who decides if it's politicking, political or if it's religious proselytizing? So as an example, we had a mental health for teenagers after the hanging at Lynnhurst, and the sponsorship was refused, uh, by an organization because there was a church involved. Um, there was no religious proselytizing going on. It was about mental health resiliency and supporting the community and teenagers. Um, but someone in whoever made that decision said, oh, there's a church involved, we're not going to touch it. Um, there was another event that was for a community cleanup and it happened prior to political campaign season. Um, but they were like, oh, well, politicians involved, therefore it's politic and we can't, uh, sponsor it. So who makes that decision? Again, on the surface, those lines make sense. That isn't how taxpayer money should be being used, but I've seen it enforced poorly.
Well, if I could, through the chair, ultimately, the board will approve all sponsorships and the board will be approving those sponsorships based on the policy the board's adopted. So you, you, you'll be the judge.
Okay, that's the question I had, because we had the Scariesville and the nonprofit associated was the Mason, Masonic Temple. So it's like, I'd hate to see something like Scariesville not get sponsored because of its affiliation. So that'll be great. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
All right, I think I got direction on that. Thank you, board.
Okay, next we will move on to, uh, 590, 2025, County Administrator, Adopt Resolution Amending the D2 Credit Card Policy to the B15 Purchasing Card Policy of the Yuba County Administrative Policy and Procedures Manual.
All right, another one for us. Um, this one actually is amending a current policy. Um, again, Sean Powers is the county administrator. Um, we did include a red line with it, but I wouldn't put much direction in that because I think we only reused about eight lines of text from the original policy. Um, the other policy, we had implemented it about 18 years ago. Um, it was for, uh, use of a credit card or P card or Cal card or credit card. We're going with purchasing card, that seems to be the acceptable terminology in bringing this policy forward. And historically, we only used it for advanced travel. As we've evolved, uh, looking at the business needs for the county, most of your department heads do have a Cal card in their possession. We use it for travel and other business-related purchases. So, uh, this was one of the policies that was on our kind of to-do list to get, uh, updated and get to the current business practices of the county. So, uh, again, we do have a red line in there, we did not use much of it. But what we did expand in the policy was definitely putting some more meat on the bone, as you would say, for some authorized use, also prohibited uses and different things that definitely said what you can and can't use a county credit card for, purchasing card for before. Um, we did establish a spending limit that, that's actually tied to the purchasing manual. Um, we did that meaningful so, so we do have something in there that adjusts with our current practices on how we do regular purchasing in the county. Um, the purchasing card is not meant to actually circumvent or go around our regular purchasing guidelines. It's simply a tool to make purchases. We definitely outlined that in there, and there are a few exemptions in there. We use our purchasing card for a lot of our utility payments, uh, with our utility providers because there's benefits to the county for that. So those fall under regular purchasing guidelines. Again, we have some sections for unauthorized use, definitely clarified that. And we also expanded some of the responsibilities and controls with certain departments, being the honor controller, the purchasing agent, our county administrator's office, and also the department head that holds that card as well. Um, definitely have some more provisions in there for any, uh, unauthorized use of there. Hopefully we never have to use those. And also then we updated, updated our card user agreement. That's the one pager that we all sign when we issue a card, uh, with the county. So, um, definitely a tune-up that falls in line with, uh, how the county conducts business and uses our Cal card for regular approved county business. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from your board.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, any, uh, comments from staff, I mean, from, uh, the public? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Next up, item 536, 2025, Sheriff Coroner, adopt resolution ratifying application authorizing Yuba County Sheriff Coroner to accept grant funds from the direct relief for sheriff's technical search and rescue team and to execute the resultant contract and related documents and approve the budget adjustment as listed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Wendell Anderson, Yuba County Sheriff, and I have with me Lieutenant J.D. Parker. And we're, just as you just said, it's, we're requesting permission to accept grant funding for our search and rescue team. And Lieutenant Parker's here to ask, can he, answer any specific questions about, uh, the purchases that we intend to make or any other, um, specified questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, is there a motion?
Moved to second.
Okay, have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor House.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Going to keep you guys up here for a while.
Thank you, yeah, we'll be here for a couple.
Next up, 583, 2025, Sheriff Coroner, approve service agreement with the Wheatland Union High School District to provide one deputy sheriff or school resource officer services at Wheatland High School and approve the budget adjustment as listed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this has been going on for quite some time. The request came from Superintendent, uh, Wheatland High School, Nicole Newman. Um, she reached out to me some time ago asking, uh, requesting, uh, to have a school resource officer at Wheatland Unified. So I obviously did my due diligence. I reached out to the Wheatland Police Department, talked to their chief about the possibility of Wheatland providing that service as opposed to us. Uh, it was relayed to me that, uh, Wheatland was unable to provide that level of service and would not be able to do so in the foreseeable future. So we have before you now is a, a request. It's, um, a contract that's been going on for quite some time. I think we have the final edits in place, we're ready for signatures. And the, um, Wheatland High School is paying for the, the full salary benefits for the person assigned to the high school, as well as a vehicle that is being utilized by the school resource officer. And if you have any specific questions, uh, we're here. I would, I didn't think I was going to be here today because I've been down on, in the weather. So, uh, Lieutenant Parker was here just in case, but he also has a, a, he's been dealing with this for quite some time, so pretty intensive knowledge of the contract, what it entails, and the services that we're intending to provide. And I don't know if you've all seen the car that was purchased by Wheatland High School, but, uh, it, it, it's a very nice, uh, reflective of their mascot and I think it, uh, it brings a lot of pride to the kids out there, so.
I, I, I saw it this morning on the highway on my way in and, uh, I was very impressed. It, it looks really sharp and it's great to see, so.
Through, through the chair. Just, just a quick question on, uh, length of time. So since we're gonna, we're gonna put a resource officer out there, that means we're gonna hire somebody else, correct, to backfill that spot?
Yeah, so to, to backfill, so after, after and if it, it, the contract is signed, that was the agreement I had with her that this would be an additional, um, that this would be an additional, we would have to have an additional allocation to provide this service at, on, you know, any length of time. So the, the request is also, yeah, in the, in the MOU, in our request is a new allocation. This was fully funded by Wheatland High School. The vehicle and all the equipment is funded by Wheatland High School, so backfilling won't impact our budget requested in new allocation.
And the term for the contract is how many years?
Five years.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Great, okay, any public comment on this item?
Is there? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor House.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yeah.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And one more for you guys. Six zero three, twenty twenty five sheriff coroner approve service agreement with the city of Marysville. Provide one public safety dispatcher for dispatch services for the Marysville Fire Department and approve budget adjustment request as listed.
Yeah, thank you. And another collaborative approach to working with Linda Fire, who as you know is contracted with the city of Marysville to provide fire services. And they're requesting that we take over dispatch services for that department. I have here Rachel Nauman, the communications dispatch manager, to answer any questions. It will be a bit of a lift and increase in the workload for us. So we again are requesting an additional dispatch position, which will be funded via that contract and, and also through some vacancy rates that we've had and budget savings through vacancy rates. So any questions that you may have? Rachel has the knowledge on the, the calls for service. I think I saw Chief Heckstrom in the back as well. We can put him on the spot if you want to and bring him up. But it's, it's pretty straightforward. The, you know, the Marysville Fire Department, they put, they work and their jurisdiction is also out in District Tanner Hallwood, which, you know, actually accounts for quite a few of our calls on the highways and out in those unincorporated areas. So I think we are optimistic that we'll be able to handle the workload, given the additional body, a new dispatcher that we'll be acquiring hopefully very soon. And any other questions between the two of us, we can answer them.
So one quick question. So this just leaves Marysville PD is the only entity in the county that's not dispatched by the sheriff's department? Is that a correct understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
It, it, actually, if I could through the chair, but you also have the rural fire districts through Cal Fire? Is that, how does that, maybe, I don't know if Rachel, if you want to.
Yeah, I think Rachel could probably better explain that. So it's the special districts, some of them we dispatch for, but Cal Fire does the majority of those dispatching.
Okay, the rural ones, okay.
So we take everything valley floor. All of our spire and mother spire. Then what we take on very far, anything up in our field region is all being prepared of by grasshoppers and Cal Fire.
Thank you for that clarification. Any additional board comment or question?
I'll just make a comment. Wendell, I really appreciate you coming in here because I can tell you're really feeling under the weather. But you know, in the future, you can send these guys and, and stay home and recoup.
I, I know, and I, I understand that, but I know, and I also know that, you know, that if I'm not here, I haven't, I wouldn't hesitate to send either one of them or any of my staff up, but I'm feeling much better, so that's why I'm here.
I appreciate it.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none?
So moved.
I'll second.
Here we have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor House.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item six zero five, twenty twenty five, community development and services accept public works recommended projects, funding sources and schedule, schedule identified in the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty transportation master plan, subject to formal approval of the projects and funding in each fiscal year's public works budget. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'm Brian Michelson, Deputy Director of Public Works Engineering. And I'm here this morning to talk about the twenty.
Could you have the mic closer?
Sorry. Here this morning to talk about the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty transportation master plan. This is a five year document. Within it, we have two major categories of improvements for roads. We also have bridges, but the main categories are overlays and our grant funded CIPs. The overlays are less in this plan than they have been, have been in the past. That's due to a trending downward of gas tax availability and also the cost of these projects going up. The grant funded projects have been very successful over the last few years in getting grants. There's no guarantee going forward whether we'll be successful or not, but we'll continue to try to get those grants. The nice things about the grant funded projects are, one, state and beds pay for a good portion of our projects. But these projects, as opposed to gas tax funded projects, which are limited to maintenance only, these projects allow us to put in a lot more improvements, a lot more safety improvements for all modes of transportation. This can include bike lanes, sidewalks, curb gutter, I'm sorry, curb and gutter, drainage, streetlights, that sort of thing, to provide for those safety mechanisms. The adoption of this plan is for five years, but it can come back at any point in time. It's a living document. Should the board or, or staff see fit, we can bring it back and amend it, re-adopt it, whatever needs to be done. And so in addition to that, hopefully it provides comfort to the board in the fact that each project moving forward prior to construction needs to come back to the board for approval. So that being said, at this point in time, I'd like to recommend the adoption of this plan and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, I'll, I'll just comment that I really appreciate that the county puts this together. I know it, it gives us an opportunity when someone asks, hey, when's this road going to get done or that road going to get done? We, we have a place to point them and, and I know that the list is quite a bit smaller this year than it has been or this cycle than it has in the past. So I appreciate you explaining why that is and the challenge that we face there. But it still gives us a place for people to look at what's planned and to anticipate what will be done and what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
Move.
Okay.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Next up, ordinances and public hearings. Would you read that for me, please, Natalie?
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Great, thank you very much. We have one item under ordinances and public hearings, six zero four, twenty twenty five. Ordinance hold public hearing, waive first reading and introduce ordinance amending section two point one one zero point one five zero of chapter two point one one zero of the Yuba County Ordinance Code relating to vehicle operations at the Yuba County Airport and also approval of ultralight operating area and course rules. So Jason speaking on this. Oh, in CM, he is hiding behind the podium. Morning.
Good morning, board and through the chair. It is a great morning to see all of you. I would like to provide to the board, in conjunction with the second half of today's presentation. And if copies are being handed out to county council and county administrators, I have extras. And with the permission of the clerk and the board, I would like to turn and make these available also. There are members in the audience who are attending today just for this agenda item and I want to make sure they have a copy of the exact same packet that will go hand in glove with the presentation that I will transition to for the second part of this agenda item. The first part today, gentlemen, is simply to come before you and recommend, as Chairman Bradford so eloquently put it, recommend to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending section two one one zero, two dot one one zero dot one five oh of chapter two point one one oh of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. The amendments that were made were to the tailgating section. It was an existing section G and it was just to include language that we find ourselves from the airport staff sending out once a year, maybe a couple of times a year, as, as issues with tailgating through the security gates gets reported to us. So we just wanted to include some additional language in the ordinance code. And then additionally, we have introduced section J, which introduces an air operations area access application, which will, will give the airport staff the tool they need to start bringing in individuals who do not have a contract or lease agreement to do business or occupy a hangar within the secure area or the air operations area of the Yuba County Airport. So having said all of that, again, just recommend the board to waive the first reading, introduce an ordinance amending two point one one oh point one five oh of chapter two point one one oh of the Yuba County Ordinance Code and make myself available in the event that there's any questions from the board.
Any questions specific to the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comments specific to the ordinance?
Are you going to open the public hearing? The ordinance?
Sure, I'll open the public hearing and I'll ask if there's any public comments specifically related to the ordinance, not the second portion.
Okay, so seeing none?
Through the chair, it appears that one of the cards for Harley Milne, it does say airport access ordinance on it. If Harley is here.
Okay, so sir, just wanted to clarify, you're wanting to speak about the ordinance itself, not the usage, not the procedures that we'll be talking about next? Okay, can, well, I, so, do you? Is it mostly about the procedures or is it more specifically about the ordinance, I guess is my question? And maybe you don't know, or can you break it up? Okay.
We need you up here.
Okay, so, sorry. We're, we're not talking about that document yet. So if your comments are related to this document, we'll be taking those comments in a few minutes. Okay, well, you can speak on both. So, so come on, come on up to the microphone and we'll take your comments related to the ordinance only.
Sure, thank you. So my name is Harley Milne, I'm a pilot. Yeah, my objection to the changes to the ordinance is specifically, I don't think it actually considers the potential impact to other transient traffic. It seems very, very directed towards the issues around the ultralight access and so forth. So for example, part of even the access requirement document, which sort of ties into that ordinance, is very vague around things like insurance and to suggest that any county employee, for example, might have sufficient information about know how to drive and work within airport operations. None of that's covered in that ordinance. So I think it's very, very clear that that ordinance is too, too refined and directed towards ultralight operations instead of really thinking well beyond that. And it doesn't consider particularly a scenario where transient traffic may come and have aircraft or people or property that need to be loaded or unloaded from the aircraft to make sure that there are proper provisions for individuals to be able to get onto the airfield to actually do that. So particularly, that's where the biggest problem with that current ordinance. And quite frankly, that those ordinance changes aren't required, they would be covered under existing rules and standard operating procedures for vehicle operations on, on any given airport, which are recommended by the FAA. So quite frankly, those ordinance changes, I don't even think even required.
And thank you. You're, you, you, not necessary, but any desire to respond to any of those comments for the, for the, for, to the board? It's okay.
Yes and yes.
Okay.
So briefly, and thank you, Harley. We do want to move forward with the ordinance update, just acknowledging that the board is actually canonizing an ordinance code, the ability for airport staff to now take an application for entry into the air operations area, unlike what has been in place before, which is those that have access have a lease agreement or a contract or a use permit of some form or fashion to provide fueling services or an FBO or a hangar tenant. This is different and, and to Harley's point, he, he is right. This is bigger and broader than just ultralight operations. We have mechanics that want to come on site and currently, and the FAA makes it clear that airport sponsors need to allow pilots to bring in their own mechanics and we do so. But the airport, they, excuse me, the aircraft owner has to meet the mechanic, escort them in, be present with them the entire time and then escort them out. Similarly, with the amphitheater and Hard Rock Casino, we're seeing more and more arrivals into the Yuba County Airport of performing acts at those venues. And so their entourage or their limousine service is being escorted in under the insurance umbrella of either the FBO or the county itself, in the case of Hard Rock. And this would again allow a limousine service provider the ability to obtain through policy and procedure and practice, access without escort to actually accommodate the same benefit to the public and the, the county overall. Does that kind of help explain or is there a different?
Sir, we're, we're, we're not gonna, we unfortunately aren't going to take additional public comments, so it doesn't turn into a back and forth. But I did want the opportunity for you to be able to respond so that the board could hear and Harley could hear as well. So I, I, I do apologize for that, so.
Do you have an additional public?
Yeah. Yes, sir. About the ordinance, sir? Okay.
David Shelton, licensed pilot aerospace engineer. But just to back up, just, just to slow things down here, the county is currently under an active federal investigation regarding discriminatory airport access. So it's really important to get this right. You know, just to frame it right now, if an airplane pilot flies in, he can go in and out of the personnel gate with no agreement. But when an ultralight operator wants to come out to the airport, then they would need an access agreement that doesn't apply to other transient users. So there's, there's some subtle details here that have to be worked out. There are a few, a few things I'm happy to talk with you about at some other point, some concerns. But I'm, I'm really objecting to voting on this topic on short notice with no committee review and no stakeholder participation. Those are my main concerns. And, you know, you bypassed the committee view, review by following this routine, but because this is tied to a federal investigation that impacts your federal funding, the economic consequences are actually enormous. You know, I believe the document stated there were no economic impacts, but this could be significant, so tread cautiously. And also when the FAA, you're currently under a forty five day extension granted by the FAA and they explicitly stated the assumption of good faith cooperation with affected users. So I interpret that at minimum to mean a noticed committee review or public workshop with stakeholder participation. So I'm basically gonna, I have an offer here. I'd like to continue this to January. And if the board is willing to schedule a noticed working session and invite ultralight operators to participate in good faith, I'll be happy to extend a thirty day extension to the Part sixteen case and we can work on these things together and come up with a resolution that's acceptable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Okay, any additional public comment on the ordinance itself? Okay, any board comment or question related to the ordinance?
Well, I have a question now of Janet. Would it be possible to do that? I mean, we rushed this because of the FAA, because of Mr. Shelton's case, and now he's saying he'd rather slow things down. Is it possible for us to do that and put it off and have a, a public input session?
I would like to consult with outside counsel before I make any agreement to do that. Mr. Shelton previously refused our request for an extension on our, our time to respond to his complaint with the FAA. So I want to consult with Porter Scott before we, I just want to make sure it's not going to have some kind of unintended. I could, yeah, I could recess and contact. yeah, I could recess and contact our outside counsel on this because procedurally, we're moving along and I want to make sure we're not causing some kind of problem for our board.
So also, just for clarification, though, ordinance takes two public hearings before, right? Is that correct? We vote on it today and then we voted on it again at our next meeting in January? So it wouldn't necessarily be finalized today?
So building off of that, we could do today, which would make our legal counsel happy. We could schedule a public hearing. And then at the next meeting, we can revise and change it and restart the process if the public input creates changes. Is that accurate? So that way, we do everything everyone wants all the time?
I am not saying that's what the recommendation is going to be for our outside counsel. I would like the moment to contact outside counsel.
Sure, I have another meeting at 11:45. So I will move that we continue with the ordinance as is. However, we schedule a public stakeholder meeting for input. And then we can make any changes and reset the ordinance as is needed because of that public input at our next meeting. Or if it stays the same, continue. And that way, we settle everyone's issues.
So, okay, so the motion is to approve the ordinance today as listed?
With direction to staff to have exactly what was just requested.
Introduce the ordinance.
Introduce the ordinance, sorry. Introduce the ordinance today. And then, okay, so and then there was a second on that? Okay, no additional public comment on the ordinance itself? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor House.
No.
Supervisor Fuhr.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I assume we'd still like to move forward with the presentation, the second piece.
Sure. And, and much of the comments thus far actually center around this. If I go to share. Yep. All right, so this is the part where the airport staff would like to present to the board for your review, comment and approval, if appropriate. The location that has been agreed upon by members of the FAA Compliance Division, Airports Division Compliance Office. The original comments, and I, I made the larger blue font boxes, I made the blue font boxes larger. So you can simply see that the initial thoughts on actually locating ultralight operations in the northeast quadrant of our runway infrastructure would actually give ingress and egress routes that would put ultralight operators hundreds of feet higher in altitude than other aircraft that may or may not be performing a touch and go, doing a missed approach, or coming in for an approach or a takeoff using the north end of the runway system. Since those initial discussions and using that early diagram, the airport staff worked with our on-call consulting firm, Mead and Hunt, to have a airport layout plan-like diagram created along with the course rules. The course rules really just kind of speak to the general guidelines and principles that go along with safety and operations and altitudes and ingress and egress. Additionally, I wanted to bring to the attention of the board that we, we do have a website ready to go. It is not public facing yet. This is what the website would look like. The only portion that we have not done is we will be adding yet another menu item over on the left-hand green menu bar, indicating that this is where you can come and get information about ultralight operations within the Yuba County airports, airport boundary. For fun, we will go ahead and just punch through and go pull that up live really quick. All of the documents that I handed you to review, I did so because they are actually here in this website, ready to be launched once the ordinance is approved and this location has been approved by your board. So I can stop going through that. Back to our presentation. I think the final thing I pulled together was just to kind of talk a little bit about the goals the airport staff had, some of the steps that were taken and the result and where we're at today. And just to sum it up briefly, the, the concerns about ultralight operations at the Yuba County Airport were not new when I became airport manager for the first time in 2020. This goes back to the 2013, 2014 grand jury, where the recommendation of the grand jury at that time was that the ultralights should be moved to the west side of the airport to avoid conflicts with other aircraft operations and to get them access to the Feather River Corridor, which seems to be a common spot or a common location to travel to. You'll notice that a lot of the red rejected areas were first, the locations, location one, let's just pick on that one. Location one, there was four different versions. It started off as a strip. The strip got larger, then it turned to a circle. But my point being is that eventually the FAA found fault with it to the point where there was no, no ability to continue pursuing that location on the west side of the airport. Location two was up near the VOR and the, the end of runway five. And so again, we pursued that for, I believe, two iterations until the FAA ruled it out. Then we went down to what is lovingly called the pizza slice, which is off of Skyway Drive, outside of the airport boundary, but definitely west and, and enabling ultralight operators to get to the Feather River Corridor. We worked through that for quite a long time. We had many people in the FAA giving the affirmative go-ahead, to the point where we actually worked with Public Works to do some earthworks, some smoothing, weed removal, fence post removal, up to and including even working with PG&E to have some old decommissioned power poles removed that were obstructions for that area. Unfortunately, the FAA finally did come to a conclusion that ultimately made that a non-viable location in their eyes. So we, we continued to move on. And, and again, we're, we're at where we are today, the northeast quadrant of the runway infrastructure. And with the course rules, we do believe that safe and appropriate aviation fund can ensue. And with that, I, I come before the board again and ask you to approve this ultralight operating area and the course rules as they're written, knowing that through policy, we will be evolving and tuning and tweaking as we learn how to support and better support ultralight operations within the Yuba County Airport. Are there any questions about this portion of the presentation?
No, okay. So we'll take public comment. Just a reminder, public's limited to three minutes each. And then if you do raise some questions, we can't really do back and forth conversation. But the board can ask staff if interested to, if the board is interested, can ask staff to respond to, to comments and questions. And so.
Would it be possible to leave that map up there? So if any of the questions are directed to the map, we have it?
Thank you.
Through the chair, we do have five request to speak cards on this. The first, Frank Bartlett.
Morning, Mr. Bartlett.
Good morning, my name is Frank Bartlett. I've been written, I have written this statement so that it can be presented at the Yuba County Board of Supervisors meeting December 9th, 2025. On several occasions in the last few years, I have gone to the Yuba County Airport with attention to flying my registered powered parachute, license number N is Nancy 2841A Apple, out of your airfield. On each occasion, I was turned away and denied access. The latest such occasion was February the 11th, 2025, when I went to go fly on my birthday with friends, only to be turned away again. Years ago, I achieved learning to fly out of your Yuba County Airport. I have many enjoyable experiences there and have met people with the same interests. It was abruptly stopped. Now, the closest airport for me, me and my friends to fly are at the Lincoln Airport, which is a considered longer distance for me. I hope this helps and let's, we can resume flying out of the Yuba County Airport. It is a beautiful scenery place for flying. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak out my matter. And if I can put this in to public records, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. I think that's exactly what the board and staff are attempting to do today.
Jason, just out of curiosity, if everything proceeds smoothly and well, how soon could Mr. Bartlett fly at the airport?
It's a great question, and I am looking for county council to tell me I can't do this. But if you guys give the go-ahead, we could start sooner than the ordinance goes into effect, correct?
My understanding is he's commenting about power parachutes? And this is operating rules for the ultralights?
Same, same, same thing.
Oh, okay. I do have my chief deputy available here to comment on things because she has definitely been the attorney that has handled this. Okay. But could we clarify what the question is again?
How soon can we open up for business?
If, if the board approved today, the, the second item that's before us, how soon would the airport legally be allowed to allow ultralight operators to resume operating according to the rules that we approve?
Okay, I'd like Taminna to comment on this in case there's any FAA, any kind of procedure required, so.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I should never have had.
Yes, sir.
Taken away. It should have always been there for me.
So I think what the airport is proposing along with the specific areas also in risk management has asked for insurance requirements for operators, just for county protection. And then we have a gate access issue. So I think what Jason, we have the area, which has been the most important part and feedback we were waiting to get back from the FAA. So if the board is okay with that, I think we are okay to fly. There are some additional concerns that the airport wanted. Like I said, minimum insurance requirements, where they're going to get access to come on to the airport. But other than that, it should be okay to fly.
So, so if the board approves what's before us, and if the requirements within that are followed, then they should be able to do it as, as soon as those requirements are met?
Is that a week? Is that a month?
Speak on, but I think that's what I heard.
Is, is that a week or is that a month?
Today, if the requirements are met, right?
Well, they'd have to submit the insurance, they have to get a key card, they have to do all sorts of stuff, right?
Yes.
So they can't, that's not going to happen today, right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so how soon could it happen?
It could happen today. They could call their insurance provider, have them bring insurance thing, go to the office, get a key card, pay whatever, well, I think I paid 35 bucks.
So they could, they could be doing this today, this afternoon, they could be flying?
If the requirements are met, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think the biggest concern was getting a proper area approved by the FAA. We do have that now. And then we wanted to bring it back to the board to make sure that the board was okay with the proposed area and there weren't any issues that you guys saw. And then, like I said, Jason, as part of the presentation, there is an insurance requirement. There is for individuals to have an application filled out and just general course rules and having an understanding of how the airport operates, what the runway and all the other. I'm not an airport. If you took me there, I wouldn't have an understanding of how to do it. But somebody like Mr. Shelton, who is a licensed pilot and knows what he's doing, as long as he has the, we have now the ultralight area. If he called and had access to the proper gates, he should be able to go out and fly, as long as the board approves the area. And then in terms of the powered parachute, I am not aware of that. If he has a registered N number to his aircraft, my understanding is that we should be allowing those individuals to fly as long as they are having access to the runway, is what my understanding is. And they, with that, Jason could comment on, I don't, I'm not privy on to what happened on February 11th with Mr. Bartlett.
So, so I'm sorry, Mr. Bartlett, but we, we don't allow folks from the public to keep coming up during public comment. You get kind of one, one opportunity to speak and then that's it? Okay. Okay, so should we move on to the next public comment unless Jason or the board has anything additional on this one? Okay.
Next public comment is David Shelton.
Thank you. Just to clarify on when we can legally fly, the FAA has confirmed that we've been allowed to legally operate at Yuba County Airport this whole time. It's federally protected under Grant Assurance 22. I have a letter from the FAA confirming that from their perspective, we're allowed to use the airport. And so basically, what you've been doing is infringing on that right. You're asking when, how soon can you stop infringing on that right? But that right is there and has been there. I wanted to clarify that. Second of all, there will be no insurance requirement. I can fly a Cessna in, there's no insurance requirement. I can fly a helicopter in, there's no insurance requirement. I can fly a business jet in, there is no insurance requirement. This is very problematic for your Part 16 case because this is, this is perhaps one of the most blatant examples of discrimination in this case. So you cannot require insurance for one class of aircraft and not other classes of aircraft. That is the whole reason you are in violation of grant assurances. So no insurance requirements, we just need to be able to go fly. What you have to do is provide access, and that's what's been missing for four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an insurance requirement for other classes of aircraft?
When an aircraft departs from another airport, they are considered transient. And if they do land at Yuba County Airport for fueling or any other reason, there is no mechanism wherein which and no goal of ever verifying that they are insured in any way, shape or form. That is just simply part of an airport's role in participating in the national network of airports.
If an aircraft departs from our airport?
So that is where every aircraft based at our airport, and even though a trailered-in aircraft is considered transient, there are liability issues that risk management has brought up. The minute we start allowing people to drive a ground vehicle into the air operations area of an airport, and she has found other examples of other airports that do allow ultralight operations, and they, they require that the ultralight operators protect the municipality that owns the airport by providing an insurance, a certificate of insurance, covering them for any mishaps, hitting the gate, hitting a taxiway light, a runway light, anything could, could occur. And that, and that is where risk management has come forward with the requirements that are being put forth at this time. And again, this is one of those areas where, to Mr. Shelton's point, if what we're asking for specifically to the letter of the law is something that an ultralight owner or operator is unable to get, then yes, the FAA has said. then yes, the FAA has said we cannot require that. However, we believe we can work back and forth and we can find an accommodation where ultralight operators can obtain a modicum of liability insurance to protect the county, and the county can accept that and allow ultralight operations to continue to happen within the boundary of the Yuba County Airport.
So if I may ask a question, Messick flies his plane, he crashes it, he does that a lot. He then puts it on a truck of some sort. He brings it over to the airport to put in his hanger for a mechanic to fix it. Is he required to show insurance when he brings that crashed plane onto the airport?
He was required to show insurance before he was actually able to obtain his hanger occupancy.
I'll, I'll give an, an example. So I have a friend that has an airplane that on a trailer and he trailers it in to the airport, use the airport. You required him to have insurance before he could come through the gate and unload his airplane, correct?
And he had to meet his instructor, who was also attended at the airport, to get access through the gate, period. So, yes.
And then also, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Shelton could take off from Lincoln and land in Area Five and then take back off again and wouldn't require insurance for that. It's only for vehicle access and on the airport grounds.
Okay, next public comment, please.
R V Milne on this item.
So thank you for providing the documentation. I kind of felt like it was getting access to it, you know, barely twenty minutes ago, wasn't really sufficient. Having had a moment to look through it and actually being one of the people that reviewed a couple of those areas on behalf of the FAA, I, I already see quite a few challenges in here with, with some of the documentation. And so my, my ask of the, the county, quite frankly, is that there needs to be an additional period of time and session where proper public comment that would last more than three minutes from a couple of individuals has a time to, to provide feedback on this. Most certainly, you know, the test has some, some problems, I think some refinement in there. The insurance is definitely a substantial issue because there are substantial discrepancies in terms of what type of insurance is really applicable between access to an airfield versus the aviation activity specifically. And you've already touched on the fact that aviation insurance is not a requirement to perform air operations. Requiring insurance to be able to, you know, rent a hanger is something different from the actual aeronautical activity. And I think that certainly what's proposed here is exceptionally problematic. And there are other challenges against at least one other city that I'm aware of that have, have tried to implement that same thing. And I believe there is at least one case that's explicitly demonstrated that that insurance requirement was totally unacceptable. So I think there's a lot more work and effort that has to take place. The additional ninety dollar fee, I think, is even problematic. That's a little discriminatory because you've got that fee plus the card fee and so forth. Remember that this is a public area. You can imagine me saying, hey, you've got to give me ninety dollars to be allowed to drive onto a public property like, like here at the city. Oh, and you need a special test to be able to lie. It, it seems a little over excessive and intentionally quite prohibitive. So my request to the county today is, I think, you know, approving the access to kind of get over this hurdle to allow people to just get back and start utilizing, utilizing the right they should always have had. It's something that should happen straight away, but there's definitely a lot of room for refinement here and to address these things and to make sure that, quite frankly, what's occurred over the last four years never happens again. There need to be adequate protections for the public who have reasonable access and should have, you know, reasonable access to conduct aeronautical business at their airport. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next comment.
Toby Mack. David Jewell.
Morning.
So I'm, I'm already going to go off script. I'm trying to keep my, keep my cool here, but or the better part of twenty years I've operated in ultralight flight school. At Yuba County, about seven years, during, on a weekly basis, hundreds and hundreds of takeoffs and landings with no issues, nothing. So the occasional, you know, complaint here and there. However, the airport itself, on average, fifteen to twenty takeoffs and landings on a busy day. So that is a busy day. I also, also operate a second location over in Lincoln as well. And over there, they have hundreds of takeoffs and landings per hour. And once again, no safety issues over there, but for some reason, this airport is, is determined to keep not only ultralights, ultralight vehicles out of the airport, but also discriminating against licensed pilots that have licensed N numbered aircraft, including myself. I've got two hangars at this airport. I was just told in June, I don't have permission to be there. I was doing everything in accordance with the law, federal law, highest licensed, licensed aircraft. But upon landing, I got told, hey, you don't have permission to operate that here. And, you know, it, the discrimination portion of it aside is I'm realizing that it's not about license versus unlicensed. It's really about appearance. I don't like the way that that thing looks. It's the Harley versus crotch rocket, you know, kind of, kind of argument there. So. Okay. Also, in the last twenty years that the FAA has kept records on this airport, there's never been a documented safety issue. So with ultralights, not one. So I mean, that's, that's the long and the short of it right there. So over the last, man, over the last four years, it's been quite the ride. As I said, I'm trying to keep my cool and I've gone way off script here, but essentially as the board, you guys are here to ensure public safety. I get that. You guys are also here to ensure that the law is being followed. And in this case, you guys are taking federal money from the federal government, and we have these grant assurances that say, hey, if you take this money, you have to keep this airport open to everybody. And it has to be equally across the board. Can't have special rules for one class of aircraft or one special, special rules for another. It's all the same. So where we are right now at the four year mark, now you guys are under federal investigation essentially for taking grant money that wasn't owed to you because you weren't in compliance. It's a big deal. And Jason, you and I talked about this years ago when this started, I said, man, it's going to catch up with us. I really hope it doesn't. I don't even fly out of there anymore hardly, hardly at all, and I don't even fly on ultralight, but I don't even like being there anymore. It sucks. Any questions, anybody?
Okay, any additional board comment or question? There's, let me clarify actually first, just to make sure there's, that's all the public comment, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair. I just have a couple of questions for Jason. So Jason, they keep referring to a investigation from the federal government. Is this, is this the complaint that was initiated by one of the public speakers that, you know, it's the, the formal processes? If you make a complaint, there's a formal investigation that is open?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. There's not an additional investigation of wrongdoing or anything, question on our funding, anything like that? Okay, just wanted to make sure. And then, again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not a airport expert, so I'm not sure on what the requirement is that everybody, every class be treated the same, but is that the case? And if so, I know it's kind of been said about the insurance is if you have a hanger there, if you're not a transient, that you have an insurance requirement. So it would be the same for this class as well?
Yes, because I can't remember which speaker spoke of it. We don't require insurance from those pilots who hangar their aircraft at our airport. We don't require the insurance that ensures the act of flying. It's a liability policy that protects the county in the event that something happens at the airport to airport infrastructure.
Okay.
It's a similar requirement, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of risk management, that we are seeking from all people that enter into the secure area of the airport.
Okay, including limousine companies and.
Including any mechanics that want access that's unsupervised, any limo drivers that want access that is autonomous or on their own. Similarly, would have to have their insurance, liability insurance requirements met as well.
All right. And on the course rule side, it's pretty typical for an airport to have course rules for ultralight operations. Is that because that you have your, you're an FAA pilot, piloting a plane and you have specialized training and, and requirements there that don't, that aren't mandated for ultralight operations? Like I could go, I mean, with some training, I could go fly an ultralight, correct? And I don't fall under the same requirements as an FAA pilot? Is that, is that why we have to have course rules for, for the for the ultralights, but not technically for the approach for an airplane?
So we have rules canonized in ordinance code for aircraft and aviators. These are separate from and different from a lot of those rules that are in our ordinance code. We, we want to manage these through a set of course rules by policy. As we go through the teething process, which has been so eloquently pointed out, is that we will evolve iteratively as we, as we put this into place, we'll find out what can be obtained, what can't be obtained, and we'll need to work internally with department heads to, to amend and adjust some of the recommendations perhaps, because that's what we're going to learn by going forward. The course rules could be modified. I spent a little less than an hour on the phone last night with one of the gentlemen from the Lincoln Airport who was very instrumental in setting up their powered parachute field, looking at our course rules. And, and he does point out some opportunities in our diagram and whatnot to actually even make it a little bit better. So I'm, I'm even aware that it can, it can improve from here going forward and is going to do so with the help of, of the ultralight operators that provide feedback, as well as the regular certified aircraft or regular aircraft operators provide feedback on how well it's working at the Yuba County Airport.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, the liability and the safety of our general public is, is paramount and gets, and it also gives these guys the opportunity to get back in there at Yuba County Airport. So, yeah. Thank you for all the work you put into this, the, and all the years that our staffs put into this. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your questions.
So to clarify what you just said, if we adopt this now, you still will be able to tweak on this later, and it's kind of adamant because of the whatever was filed by Mr. Shelton that we get this rolling. But we can approve this now and then come back and maybe have a community meetings and see about tweaking it in a different way. So. I'm just wanting to clarify a few things for some of the people that did speak. I'm glad you guys said it's been four years because I've only been elected and on this board for a little less than three years now. Because Mr. Shelton brought up at one meeting that I closed this and not only was I not on the board, I spoken favor of, spoken for the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Aero Squadron, which I'm the commander of at that meeting. So I really had nothing to do with shutting this down and, and then the whole time was trying to come up with ideas and ways to get it open back up for the powered parachuters. Matter of fact, I drove Mr. Shelton around in my Jeep at one point and found location two, which we both brought to Jason, which we thought would be good, ultimately was rejected by the FAA. Area three, in my opinion, would be the best place for the ultralights and outside the fenced area, maybe the key card fees and things would be waived and would be much more affordable for ultralights. But the ultralight community complained to the FAA enough that the FAA rejected that scenario. I think it would have been the safest. So those are my comments. I think we should, now that the FAA has finally accepted Area Five, I think we should get this approved so we can comply and then possibly come back and, and tweak on it. And then maybe if there's an opportunity for the local community that flies these ultralights to go back to the FAA and say, hey, maybe three would be a better spot for us. We could look into that in the future.
Is that a motion?
So I, I also have been wanting this to be open for quite a while, and I also would like to see the fees be reduced and any kind of burden from insurance to be minimal. So I will move that we go ahead and go forward with this so we can open up today. However, the meetings that we had directed for the previous ordinance would include all of the things in this paperwork as well, so that we can get their input to how best to serve their desires for the community, since that is our job to keep it open and make it available.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, versus second additional board comment?
I do, I'm, I mean, I'm going to vote to approve this too, but I think the, the operating plan needs to be management driven at the airport because, as we all know, the, these one person, two person show out there. And if you have twenty or thirty ultralight pilots that show up, they're going to over, they're going to talk over them. They're probably not going to hear them out for what it is, for how good it is. So just be, be aware that even if we hold a, a community meeting, it might not be as productive as what we'd want because I know nobody wants, none of the pilots are going to want those rules. I mean, we've heard it through the comments, but we have to have some rules to take the liability off the county and to satisfy the needs for the, the airport itself. So I just want to take that into consideration.
Yeah, no, that, that's an important point that, you know, while public input is always welcome and accepted, it isn't always able to be incorporated into, you know, whatever's being done, but it, it should be and can be when it makes sense. So. Okay, so with that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Correspondence is as listed on the agenda, and next is board and staff member reports. So we'll start with Supervisor Vasquez.
Sorry, I'm, it's been a month and I know Seth has somewhere to go.
All right, I will, thank you. I went to the Sutter Museum. It was great. They sent me the tickets individually and directly. So I think that is how all of our stuff should work so that we can not have the other issues that are worried about with our gifts. I think getting the promotions and then giving those tickets to staff wouldn't have a conflict. So I, I don't think that that particular policy is as well thought out as it could be at the wider agency either. And then coming up, we have the Allah First Parade and we have, there was another, and I forgot. Have a great day, guys. Merry Christmas.
All right, I'm going to jump back in. Okay, it's been a long month. So starting off, I went to the Homeless Consortium Annual Homelessness Update. The point in time count showed that our homeless numbers have dropped. Could be because it was an extremely cold and terrible day to do it, but that is also the time that people are in shelters and out of the, out of the weather, so they, they definitely counted as many as they could. There was a presentation from a youth committee on youth homelessness, which was pretty great. You don't realize, like I, I'm a teacher and I didn't realize that two of my students were in the videos and that they, they're driving force behind trying to get kids off the street. So that was great. Had a Marysville Liaison Update. We talked about the two hundred and fiftieth, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary coming up and the hundred seventy fifth of Marysville. So there's going to be a spectacular push for a regional event. More to look forward to. Also, I recommended at that meeting that we rename the boat ramp area that's in Beckworth Park to memorialize, memorialize Bill Simmons, a former city council member and Yuba County Supervisor. Air Quality District extended Yuba Sutter Transit's grant to subsidize fares for the next year. That was a pretty good push because there's not as many grant opportunities, so that's, that's a big one. Yuba Sutter Transit approved the purchase of several new cutaway buses, which are your mid, midsize bus for dialer ride service and community shuttles, that kind of thing. But they also had to apply for a waiver with the state to allow them to purchase those vehicles because they are not electric vehicles and we don't have the infrastructure for it. So if I could get help supporting that letter anytime they ask for it, that'd be great. North Central Consortium, their longtime director Cindy Newton and our Yuba County Office Education Director of our workforce programs, Karen Jobe, they're both retiring and their retirement party is tomorrow at eleven thirty. And that is at the Sutter County Superintendent of Schools Office.
of Schools office. I got to judge the air out the truth videos from local high schools. I'm not sure who won because I didn't get to go to the award ceremony, but a lot of creative kids talking about the risks of vaping in our community and, and talking about the truth behind it, not just what we see in here on TV. Participated in the sanctuary, non-sanctuary county ad hoc committee meeting at the beginning of the month. Still some more work to do there. LAFCO had a huge accomplishment. Marysville and Linda Fire Department consolidated services formally. And it's a huge, huge change for our area and great, great work forward. See here, I met with a group of individuals proposing an official Yuba County museum. They have a nonprofit established and I direct them, the staff, to try to help find a home for their ideas. They want the Packard Library. Marysville has lots of ideas for the Packard Library and a RFP process or proposal requests coming up for that building's use. And it sounds like it'll be commercialized, stay with, on the tax rolls. And then, let's see here. So the last week I attended CSAC with Gary and some county staff and learned a lot about how our state, our state works together to lobby efforts. And I'm participating on the Agriculture, Environmental and Water Resource Policy Committee, hoping to serve on that committee as well and not just be a member. And nationally, I got appointed to the NACA Steering Committee for Workforce, Community Development, Economic Development and Housing. And so I'll work with other members of the state of California and people across the country to, to try to make sure our region stays in the, in the minds of our local leaders. Busy month, but wanted to make sure all that got put in. Thank you.
Supervisor Messick?
Mine's not near that lengthy and a lot more fun. I'd like to congratulate Browns Valley 4-H for winning Best Decorated Float in the Marysville Christmas Parade. And if you guys missed it, the Lo Marica Christmas Parade is this Sunday at 5 o'clock. Starts at the Gold Eagle Market. Go up to Fruitland Road, around to the Lions Club, have a spaghetti dinner, raffles, fundraising thing. This is their second annual. Last year was a big success and we're growing on that success. And lastly, I'd just like to let everybody know, one of my constituents, a young man named Jasek Frost is riding in the NFR. He's gone through five rounds on bareback and I haven't been able to see it. He rides about 6:00 PM every night and I've had something at 6:00 PM every night. So I'm hoping in the next few days to be able to watch him ride. But what an accomplishment just to even make it to the NFR. So with that, I'd like to, maybe after the NFR, we do some kind of a proclamation for Jasek.
Sure. That sounds great. Natalie, anything?
Nothing for us. Thank you.
I'd like to express my congratulations to Tamina Morrow on her appointment to the Sutter County Superior Court. I'd like to thank her for all the great legal services she provided to the county council office and the county over the years and her contributions to county council. I'd like to thank her for the work and the support to me personally as my right-hand person in the office. She will be missed, but I am very proud and happy for her and glad that Sutter County will receive such a fair and skilled judge.
Awesome. Thank you. Kevin?
Very nice, Janet. Just a quick note. I know Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health presented today on the impacts of SB 43. They also have impacts coming related to Prop 1 implementation. And if the board recalls, there's kind of, it changed the funding buckets on how some of those, the funds that come into the organization can be utilized. They're setting up meetings to kind of brief the board members on that. Just want to make sure you guys understand what they're briefing you on. So that'll be coming up next week.
Through the chair. Could we get a future agenda item related to, or actually just an ad hoc committee maybe appointed to look at adding or working with City of Marysville to rename the boat ramp that's in Beckworth Park to honor Bill Simmons? I don't know how we could push that forward.
Sure. Through the, do you guys still have liaison committee meetings with them?
Tonight.
Okay. Maybe through that?
Every month, but I want to.
Yeah.
Make sure we're pushing.
I mean, I'm not opposed to an ad hoc committee, but it seems to me like maybe the liaison folks would be the best.
So tonight, I guess when we bring that up, we can talk to the city about what support they need from the county. That's something we can bring back.
Yeah, that'd be great. Perfect.
I think it, I think it's, it would be a good opportunity to, with the time with, there's a lot of plans that have kind of stalled out on that boat ramp and talks kind of stopped all around it. That'd be great to open those back up.
Yeah. No, I think that's a great idea. Okay. So I've got a few items, not as many as I could have, given it's been like over a month since we've met. But I'll, but I'll go through a few recent and upcoming things. So as mentioned by Renick, I was with him at the CSAC conference and I chaired the Housing, Land and Transportation Committee there. We had a great discussion and some great presentations on housing and on road, road usage charges or other replacement fundings for the gas tax. Had a SECOG Strategic Planning Committee meeting yesterday and also represented SECOG at a press conference at SAC Valley Station. Gold Runner, which was formerly known, the Gold Runner Train Service, which was formerly known as the Amtrak San Joaquin's, restored full pre-pandemic service as of yesterday with seven daily round trips down to the Bakersfield area between Sacramento and Bakersfield. That is one of the lines that will eventually hopefully connect up to Chico through Yuba County. So that's monumental for us as well, that that continues to grow. In addition to that, I understand that Capitol Corridor yesterday returned to full pre-pandemic service as well. So that's good to see. I have an RCRC board meeting tomorrow and we'll be voting for second vice chair and other leadership for next year. A GSEC meeting this week and a SECOG board meeting next week, in which we'll be voting for 2026 leadership there as well. On a community event standpoint, this last weekend was the Wheatland Christmas Street Fair on Saturday night, and I attended that. So that's why I was not at the Marysville Parade. Sunday evening was the community tree lighting in Plumas Lake. And this coming Saturday in Plumas Lake is the Plumas Lake Charity Christmas Parade. So that collects food for the Yuba Sutter Food Bank as the parade moves along and also usually I think collects toys for So You Can as well. So, and just anyone in the community that wants to participate kind of shows up at the school at the predetermined time with their decorated vehicle and participates. And they have a predetermined route. So folks along can go there to, to watch. So anyway, that's it for me. We have closed session. We will recess until 12:10 and then we will do closed session as listed on the agenda. So thank
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.
In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh my gosh. Thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good. The prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here. And it's, my dad and mom have known Mary Jane and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Olivehurst. This week on yubasutter.live, lots of live streams, beginning with Tuesday Government Watch, presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage at plumuslakeselfstorage.com. At 3:00 PM, the Sutter County Supervisor's Regular Meeting. At 6:00 PM, the Yuba City Unified School District Trustees' Special Meeting. And at 6:30, the Marysville Unified School Trustees' Regular Meeting. On Saturday, December 13th, we'll be at the 9:00 AM Reefs Across America, live from Sutter Cemetery. At 2:00 PM, we'll check in with the Yuba City Christmas Stroll to find out what's happening. And at 5 o'clock, we'll bring you the Olivehurst Christmas Parade, live from Olivehurst Avenue, presented by Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue in Olivehurst and by Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Sunday, December 14th at 6:00 PM, Reefs Across America Replay. And at 7:00 PM, the Olivehurst Christmas Parade Replay. Tuesday, Government Watch. And then Christmas in Yuba Sutter. That's happening this week, right here on yubasutter.live.